Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Santa Clara City Council to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, Assistant City Clerk.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Shawal.
Present.
Councilmember Hardy.
Present.
Councilmember Park.
Here.
Councilmember Jane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Here.
Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Statement of Behavioral Standards. The city of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction and matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome, and thank you for your participation. Registered lobbyists speaking in a lobbying capacity are required to identify themselves as such and disclose the clients and/or organizations that he or she represent at any meeting held with city officials or at public meetings. City Code Section 2.155.110.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. For today's meeting, the council is back in person and is conducting its meeting in a hybrid manner. The public is welcome to attend in person, and the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow participation from your home or office. Members of the public can still join via the link and or call into the Zoom meeting phone number shown on the screen now. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press *9 on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower your hand to ensure that members of the public are seeking to speak on the appropriate agenda item, which we only have one on the agenda tonight, study session. So, we'll move on to the council agenda. So, for tonight's meeting, this is a long-awaited study session on the Related Santa Clara Development Project located at 5155 Stars and Stripes Drive and the proposed amendment to the master community plan to introduce an additional Scheme C land use option by the developer, Related Santa Clara LLC. City Manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you to the members of the public that are both hearing, watching from home. Javon Grogan, City Manager. Tonight's special study session is focused on the Related Santa Clara Project. As one of the most significant mixed-use developments in the Bay Area, the project represents a long-term partnership between the city and Related to transform a former landfill and golf course into a vibrant new district within Santa Clara. Tonight's session is intended to provide a comprehensive review of the project's history, its entitlements, development agreements, as well as all of the progress that has been made to date. We will discuss key challenges for the development's future. We will also present an overview of an amendment to the master plan community under which we currently call Scheme C. This includes changes to land use, density, and project phasing. Our goal tonight is to give the council a clear picture of the project's status and solicit feedback and questions based on the information that we present to you tonight. I want to say that this is not a hearing on Scheme C. This is a study session primarily focused on the related project as a whole. As the slide presents, we have a lot of information for you today. Tonight's agenda really has two parts. The first is focused on the background of the project. Assistant City Manager Liz Klotz will kick off this presentation. She'll provide an introduction of our entire city team. You have here a full complement of city staff as well as city consultants that have worked on this project, some for several years. We will go through the project history and timeline. We will discuss the entitlements, the development agreement, a reminder of those 2016 entitlements. We will also talk about what's called the disposition and development agreement. We'll talk about all-important ground rent. As you know, this was a project that has ongoing revenue to the city. Again, progress and challenges. And then, as a part of Part One of this presentation, Related Santa Clara is here today, and they will have a presentation for you as well. We will pause after those two presentations for questions and comments. At that time, I think we'll need a break. And then, we'll have Part Two, which is on the proposed adjustments to the entitlement. We will talk about the current economic conditions. We will review Scheme C. We will discuss terms that are currently under negotiation for the information that will be brought back to you at a later date. We'll have our fiscal consultant provide a presentation on the rent and the fiscal analysis that they've conducted. We'll talk about the next steps for us to return to you. And then, Related Santa Clara will also have a presentation. And then, after Part Two, we will pause for questions and feedback. And I do think the mayor may want to take public comment after each part, but we'll address that when we get there. So, with that, I'll turn the presentation over now to Liz Klotz, Assistant City Manager.
Welcome.
Hi. Welcome, and thank you for joining this study session. I'm really excited to talk about this project. Related Santa Clara represents one of the most transformative undertakings in Santa Clara's history with regional economic implications and long-term community benefits for our city. So, just to go over the purpose of why we're here today. We're going to provide a background of the project, including its history and the planning framework. We will discuss the progress that has occurred since the project started, including entitlement milestones and early construction efforts. We'll review the key challenges that have contributed to the delays, including litigation, pandemic, and market conditions. And then, we'll present the proposed amendments under Scheme C, including changes to the land use density and project phasing. And finally, we will be answering your council questions and also soliciting feedback from the council on the information that we present tonight. And first, I want to introduce the team. We've been working pretty closely, some of us for the last, for me at least, the last five years, and some have been on the project since 2016. It's required a lot of cross-departmental collaboration with all our city departments, and we've been meeting on a weekly basis, sometimes on a weekly basis, mostly on a monthly basis, on this project to help advance this public-private partnership. The team includes the City Manager Javon Grogan, myself, and Alicia Knight from the City Manager's Office. We also have our economic and fiscal consultant, David DeWesima. He is an independent consultant that we hired on behalf of the city. You might recognize him. He's represented the city on several projects in the past. Along with the great legal team of Glenn Gugans and Alexander Abbey, our internal team, we have outside council assistants, Anna Shimko and Eric Phillips from Burke Williams Sorenson. Anna has been really the backbone for us and supporting us through this project since she's been here, really since its inception. And they have extensive experience in land use and development agreements, and they both have been a tremendous support for this project. From the community development team tonight, we have Afsen Hamid, our Community Development Director, and Namisha Agarwal. She's one of our senior planners here, and they both will be presenting this evening. We also have our Public Works Team, Craig Mobek, Mike Liu, Dave Staub, Steve Chan, and Brian Lee. They have both been instrumental in advancing some of the early work projects that we've been meeting on, as well as our additional departments, which are numerous, and the staff is also. There are many staff to mention, but I will just mention the departments Fire, Parks and Rec, Silicon Valley Power, and Water and Sewer. All right. So, I first want to talk about what the project site was, or is. It's the Tasman City Lots. They're the two city parking lots that face Tasman Road. And then, the formal landfill site. This landfill site included uses the Santa Clara Golf and Tennis Club, the David's Restaurant and Banquet Facilities, the Fire Station 10, the Parks Maintenance Facility, and then the Powell BMX Park. Developing on a landfill, it can be, it comes with a lot, a big set of challenges, including geotechnical constraints, high infrastructure costs, land use restrictions, and then also the environmental system.
Act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, Assistant City Clerk.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Shawal?
Present.
Councilmember Hardy?
Present.
Councilmember Park?
Here.
Councilmember Jane?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Here.
Mayor Gilmore?
Here.
Statement of Behavioral Standards. The City of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction and matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation. Registered lobbyists speaking in a lobbying capacity are required to identify themselves as such and disclose the clients and/or organizations that he or she represent at any meeting held with city officials or at public meetings. City Code Section 2.155.110.
So, good evening, everyone. For today's meeting, the council is back in person and is conducting its meeting in a hybrid manner. The public is welcome to attend in person, and the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow participation from your home or office. Members of the public can still join via the link and or call into the Zoom meeting phone number shown on the screen now. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower your hand to ensure that members of the public are seeking to speak on the appropriate agenda item, which we only have one on the agenda tonight, study session. So, we'll move on to the council agenda. So, for tonight's meeting, this is a long-awaited study session on the Related Santa Clara Development Project located at 5155 Stars and Stripes Drive, and the proposed amendment to the Master Community Plan to introduce an additional Scheme C land use option by the developer, Related Santa Clara LLC. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you to the members of the public that are both hearing, watching from home. Javon Grogan, City Manager. Tonight's special study session is focused on the Related Santa Clara Project. As one of the most significant mixed-use developments in the Bay Area, the project represents a long-term partnership between the city and Related to transform a former landfill and golf course into a vibrant new district within Santa Clara. Tonight's session is intended to provide a comprehensive review of the project's history, its entitlements, development agreements, as well as all of the progress that has been made to date. We will discuss key challenges for the development's future. We will also present an overview of an amendment to the master plan community under which we currently call Scheme C. This includes changes to land use, density, and project phasing. Our goal tonight is to give the council a clear picture of the project's status and solicit feedback and questions based on the information that we present to you tonight. I want to say that this is not a hearing on Scheme C. This is a study session primarily focused on the Related project as a whole. As the slide presents, we have a lot of information for you today. Tonight's agenda really has two parts. The first is focused on the background of the project. Assistant City Manager Liz Klotz will kick off this presentation. She'll provide an introduction of our entire city team. You have here a full complement of city staff, as well as city consultants that have worked on this project, some for several years. We will go through the project history and timeline. We will discuss the entitlements, the development agreement, a reminder of those 2016 entitlements. We will also talk about what's called the Disposition and Development Agreement. We'll talk about all-important ground rent. As you know, this was a project that has ongoing revenue to the city. Again, progress and challenges. And then, as a part of Part One of this presentation, Related Santa Clara is here today, and they will have a presentation for you as well. We will pause after those two presentations for questions and comments. At that time, I think we'll need a break. And then, we'll have Part Two, which is on the proposed adjustments to the entitlement. We will talk about the current economic conditions. We will review Scheme C. We will discuss terms that are currently under negotiation for the information that will be brought back to you at a later date. We'll have our fiscal consultant provide a presentation on the rent and the fiscal analysis that they've conducted. We'll talk about the next steps for us to return to you. And then, Related Santa Clara will also have a presentation. And then, after Part Two, we will pause for questions and feedback. And I do think the mayor may want to take public comment after each part, but we'll address that when we get there. So, with that, I'll turn the presentation over now to Liz Klotz, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Welcome and thank you for joining this study session. I'm really excited to talk about this project. Related Santa Clara represents one of the most transformative undertakings in Santa Clara's history, with regional economic implications and long-term community benefits for our So, just to go over the purpose of why we're here today, we're going to provide a background of the project, including its history and the planning framework. We will discuss the progress that has occurred since the project started, including entitlement milestones and early construction efforts. We'll review the key challenges that have contributed to the delays, including litigation, pandemic, and market conditions. And then, we'll -- oh, sorry. And then, we'll present the proposed amendments under Scheme C, including changes to the land use density and project phasing. And finally, we will be answering your council questions and also soliciting feedback from the council on the information that we present tonight. And first, I want to introduce the team. We've been working pretty closely, some of us for the last -- for me, at least, the last five years, and some have been on the project since 2016. It's required a lot of cross-departmental collaboration with all our city departments, and we've been meeting on a weekly basis, sometimes on a weekly basis, mostly on a bi-monthly basis, on this project to help advance this public-private partnership. The team includes the City Manager Javon Grogan, myself, and Alicia Knight from the City Manager's Office. We also have our economic and fiscal consultant, David DeWesima. He is an independent consultant that we hired on behalf of the city. You might recognize him. He's represented the city on several projects in the past. Along with the great legal team of Glenn Gugans and Alexander Abbey, our internal team, we have outside council assistants, Anna Shimko and Eric Phillips from Burke Williams Sorenson. Anna has been really the backbone for us and supporting us through this project since she's been here, really since its inception. And they have extensive experience in land use and development agreements, and they both have been a tremendous support for this project. From the community development team tonight, we have Afton Hamid, our Community Development Director, and Namisha Agarwal. She's one of our senior planners here, and they will -- both will be presenting this evening. We also have our Public Works Team, Craig Mobek, Mike Liu, Dave Staub, Steve Chan, and Brian Lee. They have both been instrumental in advancing some of the early work projects that we've been meeting on, as well as our additional departments, which are numerous, and the staff is also -- there are many staff to mention, but I will just mention the departments: Fire, Parks and Recs, Silicon Valley Power, and Water and Sewer. So, I first want to talk about what the project site was, or is. It's the Tasman City Lots. They're the two city parking lots that face Tasman Road, and then, the formal landfill site. This landfill site included uses the Santa Clara Golf and Tennis Club, the David's Restaurant and Banquet Facilities, the Fire Station 10, the Parks Maintenance Facility, and then, the Powell BMX Park. Developing on a landfill, it can be -- it comes with a lot, a big set of challenges, including geotechnical constraints, high infrastructure costs, land use restrictions, and then also the environmental systems that need to be in place to be able to build on top of that landfill. So, despite these complexities, the site presents a unique opportunity for major infill development adjacent to our key regional assets, like the stadium or convention center, and just our developing north side of Santa Clara. To meet these challenges, the city partnered with Related, one of the largest privately-owned real estate firms in the U.S. It is known for developing large-scale, multi-phase projects, including Hudson Yards in New York and the Grand in L.A. Related brings this experience and resources needed to really transform this site. So, in 2016, Related, the project was approved, and it was a 200 -- this is a 240-acre mixed-use development project site that's located directly across from Levi Stadium. It is envisioned as a vibrant urban district. The plan included a mix of office, retail, residential, hotel, and entertainment uses, along with substantial public open space. At full buildout, the project will deliver more than 9 million square feet of development. It is positioned as a regional hub for innovation, business activity, and community engagement. And before I go into the rest of the presentation, I want to orient you with the references that we use. So, we refer to the project by parcel number and also by phase number, and it can get a little confusing, so I want you to use these two slides as reference tools. So, this is the project by parcel number. The Tasman sites are at parcel five. You'll notice that the sites that we'll be talking about in Scheme C are parcel one and two. But when we discuss the phases, you'll see that that parcel five is actually Phase One of the project, and that parcel one and two is actually Phases Five, Six, and Seven. So, just, you know, this is just for you to be able to orientate yourself if you have a question about what sites we're talking about during the presentation. So, we're going to start with the history of the project. Afton is going to be going over the existing entitlements, and then Anna and David will be following up with the current development agreements, DDA, and also a discussion on the rent of the project. And just a quick history, over three years of negotiation and land use planning, it culminated in a comprehensive development vision. So, in 2013, the city entered into an exclusive negotiations agreement with Related to explore the redevelopment of the former golf course. In 2014 to 20 -- from 2014 to 2016, comprehensive planning efforts and environmental review occurred, including a full EIR. In June of 2016, the city approved the Master Community Plan, the Development Agreement, the General Plan Amendment, and also the Disposition and Development Agreement. I will now turn it over to our Community Development Director, Afton Hamid, who will go over the existing entitlements over this project.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and members of the public. And thank you, Liz, for the background. So, I will go through the existing entitlements and provide you an overview. So, the Master Community Plan is for the entire 9.16 million gross square feet of development, and it puts forth the city's vision for future development for all five parcels and the types of land uses, road network, multimodal access, and park for a very cohesive development. The site plan, as Liz stated, was adopted in 2016, and it was through an action called a General Plan Amendment, Master Community Plan, rezoning, and it required community outreach, planning commission recommendations, and then, city council took the final action. The city adopted an enhanced open space variant, which is on parcel three, which is right here, and it will be retained as a city park. And it also incorporates what is called an increased housing alternative, and I will explain that shortly. So, there are five development parcels: parcel one, parcel two, parcel three. This is parcel four, and then, parcel five is here. The proposed development is expected to achieve a buildout of all five development parcels through multiple phases, and the phasing takes into account such factors as projected market, infrastructure cost, community benefits, and development flexibility. So, the 2016 EIR anticipated the flexibility that would occur, and it analyzed two conceptual land use schemes, Scheme A and B, to capture the possibility of the land uses. In both schemes, parcel one, which is here, and parcel two, were primarily office uses. And then, parcel three was a city park. And then, this park will be designed, funded, and constructed by the city, and the developer will provide the contribution. The design -- the developer will design and build the southern portion of parcel three, which is here, as a public park. Parcels four and parcels five, which parcel five is right here, are mixed-use, the city center development, with varying levels of office, residential, retail, restaurants. And I want to briefly describe what the increased housing alternative is. This alternative has a baseline of 1,360 housing units and an addition of 320 residential units to yield a maximum of 1,680 residential units, and those will all be in parcel four. So, this slide is -- basically describes the phasing, and it also describes the existing entitlements. So, just to give you an idea, when we talked about the phasing, this is parcel two, but in parcel two, there are two phases. This is parcel four, and in parcel four, there are three phases for development. And this, the parcel four is the city center mixed use that I had described. And the chart here to the left describes all the entitlements that have been provided to date. So, in 2016, June 2016, there was a certified EIR, General Plan Amendment, rezoning, and an accompanying Master Community Plan. As subsequent, more fine-tuned development proposals came forward, we conducted what is called an addendum to the EIRs. So, the first addendum was DAP one, which is Phase One, right here, which is parcel five, and that occurred in March of 2020. And DAP four, or sorry, DAP two, is actually parcel four, and that second addendum was done in July 2020. The important thing to remember that even though the EIR addendums were prepared, the addendums still fall within the original council-approved EIR. And then, next, I will share the existing entitlements for the two parcels, parcels four and parcels five, where we have the entitlements. So, parcel five, and if you look at your key map here as a reference, parcel five is along Tasman Drive, right here, and parcel five includes mixed use with office of 440,000 square feet, retail food and beverage of 51,000, hotel of 381,000, and residential with 200 units. It is 1.047 million square feet of development, and it's mixed use development, and it also has a standalone parking structure. The planning entitlements are complete as of March 2020. Parcel four is the next one that has existing entitlements, and the area that I'm going to describe again is if you just focus here on the key map. The parcel -- whoops, sorry. Parcel four that we're discussing is only a portion of parcel four that we're discussing, and it's 44.5 acres of the entire 88.6 acres of parcel four. And it is proposed for 1.7 million square feet of development, and again, it includes a range, or mixed uses, as we call it. And in this portion only, there's 500 residential units that are proposed. However, the additional residential units will be throughout parcel four. So, the planning entitlements are complete, and council approved those in July 2020, and the architectural review was approved in May of 2022. I will now introduce Anna Shimko and Eric Phillips with Burke Williams &amp; Sorenson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Afton. I'm Anna Shimko from Burke Williams &amp; Sorenson, and I'm very happy to have been working on this project for about 12 years. So, we're going to go through and discuss the key terms of the development agreement and the disposition and development agreement. Not to stay too long on this slide that says almost nothing, but it's important to understand the difference between these two agreements, both of which were approved by the council in 2016. So, I know there are other projects for which you have approved development agreements. That's a statutory development agreement that locks in, vests the rules of the game for the development going forward for a certain period of time, and often has a number of community benefits in the agreement as well. A disposition and development agreement is one that we don't see as often. It is the terms and conditions for when the city owns land, and the developer will lease or sometimes purchase the land, and it is very involved and sets forth all of the terms under which that development will occur. And here, because the city owns the land and will continue to own the land and must own the land because the city is responsible for the landfill, which is under everything except for parcel five, so the city will retain the landfill and will ground lease out landfill parcels that are above the landfill cap. And so, the disposition and development agreement, or DDA for short, discusses the manner in which that will occur and the relationship between the parties. So, there is, in the disposition and development agreement, and that's what we'll discuss first, a schedule of performance was attached that specifies the timing required for the ground lease and commencement of infrastructure and the key tasks that occur for each of the seven phases in the project. The original schedule of performance provide -- this is the updated schedule of performance that is updated to reflect -- we'll get into this a bit later, about excusable delay that comprises force majeure or materially adverse economic conditions under the disposition and development agreement. But because of those conditions, the schedule of performance has been pushed out over time repeatedly for myriad reasons that we'll explain to you. And so, this is the current schedule of performance. The original schedule of performance for your reference had an obligation for Related to ground lease Phase One by the end of 2017, and Phase Two by the end of 2018. As you can see here, Phase One has been ground leased, not because they were obligated to by the date that they took down the ground lease for Phase One, but because they were ready to move forward at that particular point in time. And so, the only hard and fast date that we have left on the schedule of performance is the date for land takedown of Phase Two, and that date is currently September 23rd, 2027. It's important to understand, under the DDA, Related is obligated to -- by the way, we say "take down," that means ground lease. It's even a defined term within the disposition and development agreement. So, they're obligated to ground lease Phases One and Two, and to move forward with those elements of the project. If they don't do that, then the deal goes away and they cannot keep going. They've already ground leased Phase One. They haven't ground leased Phase Two. If they don't do that within a timely manner, then the property will revert fully to the city for us to dispose of as we deem fit. If they do do that, then they have to continue to move forward under the schedule of performance. And the way that the later phases work is they're not hard and fast dates. They roll off of the trigger that happened in the earlier phase. Notably, Phase 2A is the city park. It used to be Phase Three before we changed the deal in 2016, and so, it's now Phase 2A. And when Related starts the process of developing Phase Two, they need to ground lease Phase 2A, which is the city park, and they will be paying us rent for the park. And then, they have to construct the road that goes into the park, and then, give us back the land so that we may develop the city park once that's all designed and we are ready to go, and they'll be contributing to that effort as well. So, the other phases, three through seven, are really just based on -- the timeframe goes based on what happened in the phase before. And these are the schedule of rents, the beginning rent, for each of the defined phases. One thing I wanted to mention as well is that phases, at this point, Phases One and Two are the first phases and must be taken down as the first phases. The other phases can actually be taken down in any order. So, for instance, if it were time to take down Phase Three, and they say, "Well, we're going to take down Phase what's denoted as Phase Four instead," they can do that, and they can reorder the phases and renumber them. If they do not meet the milestones for one of these later phases, they simply -- they don't lose the entirety of the deal, but they do skip whatever that next phase is whose trigger they did not meet. So, this is the beginning annual rents for each of the phases, and as you'll see, Phase One is treated a little bit, not much, but a little bit differently in terms of the rent structure because it's not on land, so it does not have the challenges to development and the costs that have to be put in for development, as do Phases Two through Seven. So, for Phase One, there's an annual 3% per year increase in the rent, and then, there are six different years at which the rent increases by 10% from the prior year's rent. And then, we have two fair market rent adjustments, one in year 20 and one in year 45. In year 20, the adjustment has both a floor and a ceiling, so a lower amount and a cap. And in -- actually, there are three other years. In years 45 and 70, there are floors but no cap. And so, that's based on a determination of the fair market value of the raw land that has been ground leased to Related in those particular years. Essentially, it works the same way for Phases Two through Seven, with the exception that the fair market rent adjustments, which here are in years 40 and 70 instead of years 20 -- or 45 and 70 instead of years 20, 45, and 70. The fair market rent adjustment is based on the fair market value of the land minus the premium costs that Related had to put into the development to take the land that the city owns, which is not developable and needs a lot of work. For instance, Related could tell you about the pilings they have to put into the landfill, the landfill systems, the podium that will be going into the city center. So, those premium costs are taken out of the fair market value, and then, a factor is applied to determine the fair market rent in years 45 and 70 for those later phases. So, before So before Related can ground lease one of the phases, and these are things, for instance, that occurred for Phase One and would occur for every other phase. There are certain preconditions that have to occur. There has to be a development area plan. And as you saw, Afshah showed you the development area plans that have been approved for Phases One and Two. And the development area plan has to show the buildings, the uses, the infrastructure, and it must be approved by the city council. In addition to you looking at the development area plan, what comes with that is a financing plan from the developer as well as information on their best efforts for teneting in terms of retail and office. And all of the requisite landfill approvals have to be secured. There are CCNRs that need to be put into place that will govern the relationship between all the various ground lesses and the city and how the city gets paid for certain things like on the landfill. And they have to submit to the city a detailed construction schedule so that we know how things are going to move forward in that particular phase before they execute the ground lease and move forward. There are, in Phases One, Two, and Three, there are minimum levels of development that are contained within the disposition and development agreement. These are in Phases One, Two, and Three because that's the city center. That's where we wanted a certain amount of these vibrant uses, office, retail, hotel, and some residential to spur the development, have enough development there that it is worth our while. And of course, we would hope that additional development occurs beyond this. But these are the minimums. The minimums only apply to Phases One, Two, and Three. The other phases have maximums but no minimum. So in Phase One, Related is obligated to develop 600,000 square feet of office, hotel, and retail uses, which would include a 300-key hotel and 50,000 square feet of retail. And so the Phase One Development Area Plan that you approved did include this minimum development. Then Phase Two is to include 700,000 square feet of retail, which would include 500,000 square feet of retail, or 700,000 square feet, sorry, not of retail, which would include 500,000 square feet of retail plus either 200,000 square feet of office or a 300-key hotel. In addition, 200 residential units need to be built in either Phases One or Two. And the Phase One Development Area Plan does include 200 residential units. So that would be secured within the first phase. Then the minimum retail is a subset of the retail that's within the minimum development. And that's overall 800,000 square feet in the city center with a minimum of 50,000 square feet being in Phase One and 750,000 being in a combo of Phases Two and Three. So I want to talk a little bit about how the public services and facilities would be funded under the disposition and development agreement. So these are the terms that we secured back in 2016. The project will pay for all park maintenance except for City Place Park. City Place Park is different because we retained that for the city to plan and develop a park. However, Related will contribute, I believe it's half a million dollars towards design. And then, once we're ready to construct a park, the rest of $5 million towards construction of the City Park. But Related will pay for all of the maintenance of the other parks throughout the project. They would also pay for any enhanced public services that result from being on the landfill if there is advanced settlement of streets or repair of streets mandated because of settlement on the landfill. Related would pay for that. In addition, if they desire more cleaning of streets than the city's norm would be, or if they want city light standards or something that is above and beyond the city's standard but it's on a public street, they would pay for all of that differentiation in cost. Notably, the project involves construction of a new fire station 10. And that, under the DDA, could be to a temporary location and then a permanent, or it could just be permanent. Turns out that it was to a temporary location to start with. And that has already occurred. The temporary fire station at, I believe, Fire Station Eight, those improvements were made by Related. So Related must also pay for a new fire station 10 at the city's chosen location that has at least three bays. And the city will approve the design for that. Then through a fire protection assessment study, Related would pay up to 4.5 additional full-time equivalent fire personnel and equipment that is necessary to serve the project due to its being on a landfill and hazardous conditions because of the landfill. Furthermore, while the city will provide one police beat to serve the city center, Related must fund enhanced police services. So that could be additional police personnel. It could be off-duty personnel, primarily to serve the city center during evenings and weekends. Now, moving to the development agreement. When the development agreement was approved in 2016, the city did not yet have an inclusionary housing ordinance. However, we secured agreement from Related that the housing built in the project would be built with 10% of the housing being affordable to a moderate income level. And at this point, the housing, the affordable housing that would be otherwise associated with the 200 units on Phase One, and the development agreement contemplated that this could be the case, that the Phase One affordable house, the Phase One housing could be market rate and the affordable component of that could be built in Phase Two. We have covenants that are recorded against the property that secure the obligation of Related to construct that affordable component in Phase Two. Then traffic and transit issues under the development agreement. Basically, all development impact fees are capped for a certain period of time under the development agreement. The local traffic fee, that being the city's traffic fee, was capped for the later of seven years after the first development area plan was approved or after 50% of the office development had been built. And after that, the city can increase the traffic impact fee amounts. Or Related would be subject to the city's increased traffic impact fees that you have otherwise approved citywide or area-wide. And then, similar to what the city has done in other development agreements, we negotiated regional traffic fees that are charged, for instance, a dollar a square foot for office and other amounts for other uses within the project. The project will also, through fees over time, make a voluntary payment to VTA in the amount of $16 million for freeway improvements. And because of the very extensive SEQA work that we did way back when, there are myriad intersections where Related needs to construct mitigation improvements at the mitigation intersections. In addition, there are fair share payments that would be made, basically with each building permit on a square foot basis, and paid to San Jose, Santa Clara, the County of Santa Clara, VTA, and Sunnyvale. And our mitigation monitoring and reporting program specifies the percentages that each jurisdiction gets paid based on where the affected intersections were located. Again, on traffic and transit issues, the city was obligated because, not too surprisingly, there were unavoidable traffic impacts that were declared in the Environmental Impact Report. And so the city was obligated to adopt a multimodal improvement plan that identifies myriad transportation and transit improvements to offset those impacts. The multimodal improvement plan was indeed adopted by the city and confirmed by VTA in 2018. And under the development agreement, the city traffic fees and the regional traffic fees go towards funding the improvements in the multimodal improvement plan. And then thereafter, the developer and the city share equally in the costs that are above whatever the, if that's the case, that are above what the traffic impact fees pay for, up to a total of an additional $8 million, so $4 million each. And after that, if there are more costs, that would be the city's burden. So the developer's maximum obligation under the multimodal improvement plan is $17.4 million. Finally, under the development agreement, as I mentioned, other development agreement, development impact fees were vested or frozen, as were the DPW plan check fees, the per sheet plan check fees. They were frozen at 2016 rates for seven years after the first development area plan was approved, subject to excusable delay. And you'll hear more about that later. The developer is and has always been responsible for the payment of costs associated with third-party consultants, such as yours truly and others you'll hear from this evening, such as environmental consultants, fiscal analysis, legal, and much more. And part of the development agreement obligates the developer to pay for a priority project manager. And as you know, Elysia Knight is the priority project manager to assist in the processing of the Related Santa Clara plans, entitlements, moving the project forward, et cetera. So one of those most excellent consultants that has been advising the city is Kaiser Marston Associates. And they were involved in the lead-up to these particular agreements and helped determine how the rent would be charged and did fiscal analysis. And David is now going to move us on to that topic.
Thank you, Anna. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you and good evening. So the next few slides are about ground rent and some of the key considerations that went into the ground rent that's reflected in the DDA and the ground leases. Most importantly is the condition of the property that the city would be conveying to the developer, which is a former landfill, of course. And it's being conveyed and as is conditioned to the developer with the developer responsible for a host of unique and special costs to be able to construct the project on the property that is a former landfill, including special foundation systems, including piles driven below the level of the waste that's underground, a structural slab that's supported by pile systems, including even the streets and utilities are supported by the structural system, which is quite unique, and replacement of all the existing landfill systems and, in some cases, integrating those systems into the building themselves. So all that results in a set of extraordinary costs associated with building on this particular site. At the time of the DDA, those extraordinary costs were estimated at approximately $900 million. Inflating those to today, it's over $1.3 billion. So just focusing for now on the ground rent, the value of land that's reflected in that ground rent is approximately $115 million. And that number comes from just the annual ground rent and the lease rate that was used to convert from land value to that annual rent. So $115 million. But the effect of land costs that Related has in doing the project, considering all those extraordinary costs, is far higher than that. So this is a summary of the ground rent. We've heard some of this information already. So I'll just focus you just on the total figure there, $7.5 million a year initially. And for purposes of that total, I have looked for parcel five at the $1.5 million a year stabilized figure, which is reached in the fourth operating year as opposed to a million that was cited before. Total over 99 years, $6.4 billion to $9 billion in ground rent. And that range is a function of those fair market adjustments that we heard about. So that low end of that range is if the floors in those fair market adjustments holds. And that $9 billion upper figure is an estimate of what it would look like if we're more towards the ceilings in those adjustments. And this slide focuses on how that ground rent compares to fair market as of the time of the DDA. So looking at the combination of those extraordinary costs and the land value that's reflected in that ground rent, we're at approximately $1 billion in total cost, total effective land cost, which equates to $122 per square foot of land. So that's the figure that we can compare to other land transactions to understand whether or not that's market or not. And that's what we did at the time of the DDA. And it's approximately, it's in excess of the other transactions that we saw at that time. So looking at office sales, that $122 was quite a bit higher than office land sales, which were between 46 and 77, quite a bit higher than residential sales at the time and within the range of what hotel sites were trading for. Okay, I'll pass it back to your assistant city manager.
Thanks, David. So now we're going to talk about project progress and challenges. Since 2016, significant work has been done with the city. We've been working on it constantly since the project was approved. But there have been challenges over this time, and we'll discuss some of those challenges shortly. But just going over the permitting that's been done, over 60 permit applications and reports have been submitted to various city, county, and stakeholders. Related has made substantial progress on early work packages, which include utilities, environmental mediation. To date, there have been 18 early work construction projects that have been completed by Related. And also, the Phase One permit package, Related is working with the city and the other agencies on the following. There's the new Tasman garage, Phase One street and utilities, the office and retail pavilions, the hotel meeting facility, and the residential units. I'm going to go over the next few slides quickly. Some of the early construction work was demolition that Related undertook on the restaurant facility, the pro shop, fire station, driving range, and the maintenance building. And then some of the early works that I wanted to highlight includes utilities installation, the temporary road that you see routing to Great America Parkway from Stars and Stripes, and the gates and construction fencing around the site, the Fire Station Eight construction that was done, and also the storm drain construction that was done off of Tasman. The project is also, has significant implementing agreements for us to enter into, obviously, the development agreement and disposition and development agreement that Anna summarized for you earlier. The other significant agreements that we've negotiated with Related is the substation agreement. And that's to deliver more power over to the site with a contribution to Esperanca Station. There is an amendment in process for that substation agreement as well. Another significant agreement is the landfill ONM. This agreement is important to address the city and the developer's responsibility before, during, and even after construction for the long-term maintenance of the landfill. And the last agreement I want to highlight are the ground leases. So in December of 2022, Related did take down the ground lease on Phase One. And since 2022, we have been collecting rent. I think the total is about $1.8 million since '22 that we've collected in rent for the project. I think the total is about $1.8 million since '22 that we've collected in rent for that phase. Sorry, also parcel five. All right. So as Anna mentioned earlier, the agreement contemplates excusable delays. There are challenges that happen throughout time that allow the project to be extended due to a delay. One of the delays is usually a force majeure event. This is a condition that's beyond reasonable control of the party, that prevent or delay the performance of contractual obligations. These include natural disasters, acts of war, terrorism, pandemics like the COVID-19 pandemic, governmental actions, processing delays, and changes in law. Also in the agreement is a provision that is an excusable delay is material adverse economic conditions. In the agreement, a material adverse economic condition is when there's an office vacancy of 15% or higher, or a retail vacancy of 10% or more at Valley Fair Shopping Center or Stanford Shopping Center. That's what we measure our vacancy for retail with. All right. So since 2016, the project has been through, been under an excusable delay since essentially when the project was approved. Several events outside the city or developer's control have contributed to the project delays, which many of these fall under either a force majeure event or excusable delay. The first is a sequel litigation. This was a lawsuit filed by the City of San Jose that challenged the environmental clearance for the project. This resulted in a delay of at least over two years. There are also regulatory approvals that delayed the project. These are lengthy approval processes from state and regional agencies that, including landfill-specific permits and environmental compliance, that required us to extend those deadlines. There's also the landfill operations agreement, the landfill ONM, that took some time to negotiate, and so that also created a delay for the project. Just to summarize, a couple others, there's the drinking water permits that caused the delay from the state water board, and also the COVID pandemic, which everyone knows has delayed a lot of development throughout the world at this point. And then the last one is changing economic conditions. I will be going, let me get to the next slide real quick, just so I can talk about that. So as we discussed in prior updates, and as you also heard at the ULI presentation, the development landscape has shifted significantly in the last few years. It's important to situate this project within the broader economic climate. Construction costs have risen 5% to 15%. Apartment values are down 15% to 30%, and office values have declined by as much as 35% to 70%. These conditions have shifted the marketplace, and despite the market challenges, Related remains committed to the long-term vision of the project and has continued to invest in early works and entitlements. You'll hear more later from the development team and from our independent economic consultant, David Dewesima, who will provide further analysis on the fiscal analysis of the project and also the market conditions driving the proposed amendment. Before we do, I'd like to introduce Executive Vice President with Related, Steve Immer, and the rest of the Related team, who will be giving you a short presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Immer.
Thank you, Mayor Gilmore. Steve Immer, Executive Vice President with Related and a partner in the project. I've been involved with the project from day one. I think my hair was blonde when we got started with this, Mayor Gilmore. At least I had more of it. I'd like to thank the city staff and its consultants for their comprehensive project status update. I think it's very important to refresh some memories and also bring some new council members up to date on what we've been through. From the outset and through all that has transpired, this has been a partnership with the city. The staff and its consultants have been directly involved on a thorough and continuous basis in all aspects of what has transpired with the project. We've continued to enjoy a terrific relationship with the staff and its consultant team, and we look forward to maintaining that great relationship as we move the project forward. That's one of the key ingredients making a partnership work. We remain strongly committed to delivering our long-term vision of creating a dynamic mixed-use destination in North Santa Clara. With this most recent entitlement effort, we've expended significant time, effort, and money to deliver what we believe will be a win-win situation for us, for the city, and for the community. As the city staff has indicated, Related has faced multiple lengthy and challenging issues outside of our control over the past years, including force majeure events such as the San Jose lawsuit set us back almost three years in working through that, and also, of course, the worldwide pandemic. In addition to that, we've faced extraordinarily difficult economic environment, which has had widespread negative effects on office vacancy, return to office as a practical matter, and also the decline in the business hotel market. Been quite significant here as well as around the country, frankly. These market challenges have been made even tougher to overcome when factoring in the rapidly escalating interest rates and construction costs, which David had just discussed, which has halted financeability of almost any new development in this market and in the broader marketplaces. Despite all of these challenges, Related has continued to invest in the project and advanced it to a point where, as you've heard, DAP I and DAP II have been approved by the city council, and we've completed the design and permit process on a Phase One office building and quite advanced hotel and residential design for Phase One as well. And through all of this, Related has continued to seek approvals for landfill development from state and county regulators, which is an incredibly complex process. That's in part where the gray hair is coming from. In fact, we have just recently received approvals from both the state water board and the county LEA, Lead Environmental Agency. Related to just Phase One, most of Phase One is not on landfill, but a small portion of it is, and we had to go through a multi-year process. And staff here, Dave Staub and Mike Liu, others from Public Works, have been involved with us in that process of getting that, those systems approved, including installing test piles on the site, a full year of quarterly monitoring to prove out that the test piles were not allowing water to be leached through the landfill. And we just finally received that approval, believe it or not, in December of last year, literally three and a half to four years of effort. And not only time, but obviously a lot of money, because we were paying for the outside engineering to work through that process. Just one more example. The State Department of Drinking Water has, just as of last month, granted us a waiver that we applied for four years ago to allow us to put a drinking water line on the landfill. And again, we would not have been able to build on Phase One without that approval. It took multiple, multiple, multiple rounds of engineering dialogue and back and forth, and again, including city staff, Gary Welling and his staff were very involved in that. And we just got that approval last month. At this point, I'd like to turn to our partner, Nick Vanderboom, who's going to give you a few more comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, and thank you, council members, for the time tonight. We really appreciate it. You know, before jumping into the project, we just wanted to just share a little bit about some of the background on Related and why, you know, we believe Related is uniquely qualified to deliver what is, you know, I think you can tell, a very ambitious, complex, long-term development. And apologize if this is repetitive for a few of the council members, but we thought it would be helpful, you know, to give a quick background. You know, Related is the largest private real estate development company in the US. We've developed, you know, owned, managed, or have under construction over 70 billion of assets. We own and operate over 100,000 residential units across the country, which includes 60,000 affordable apartments and 44 million square feet of commercial space. You know, we're recognized as a leader in these complex mixed-use projects. And, you know, one that we've really become known for in the last decade is Hudson Yards. This is 12 million square feet of development that was built all at once. It includes office, retail, residential, hotel, public gathering spaces, you know, really creating an entirely new neighborhood on the west side of Manhattan. And, you know, while different, very different from this project, I think similar in that it was a complex public-private joint venture with the city, the state, the MTA. There were substantial public infrastructure investments, including building a platform over and operating rail yards to deliver this project. And I think importantly, it took over a decade of work to come to life. And, you know, today, it's nine million square feet. Today, you know, this is over nine million square feet of office space. That's 100% leased. It's the center of a vibrant new neighborhood. But, you know, the company's been at it for 15 years, and we still are working on delivering the rest of that long-term vision with the Western Yards in the second half of that project. And our teams continue to adapt to current market realities to try to complete this project. In California, we've, you know, we've been active here for 36 years. The company has delivered over 21,000 units of housing in over 40 cities across California. And I'll share just a couple examples of some more relevant projects that we've worked on. You know, this one is really unique. We started in 2014. This is at the corner of Mission Van Ness in San Francisco. 1550 is a 550-unit apartment building with 20% affordable units on site. And we partnered with the City of San Francisco to build housing on one half of the site and then act as a fee developer for the city on the other half of the site, where we built 49 South Van Ness as a half a million square foot office building for the city's Department of Planning, Public Works, and Permitting, all in one consolidated headquarters. And this, you know, nearly billion-dollar project across the housing in the office, you know, again, took nearly a decade to kind of from start to finish to deliver. But I think it's an example of a successful public-private joint venture. In Los Angeles, you know, this project, The Grand, Related began pursuing in 2005. We were awarded an RFP to develop a site across from Disney Concert Hall. We rode through the great financial crisis and through a changing market, eventually breaking ground in 2019, 14 years later, after we were awarded that RFP. But we delivered this 1.1 billion dollar mixed-use project with residential hotel and retail in 2022, and we're continuing to manage that, you know, and realize that vision of anchoring the cultural core of downtown LA. And then the last one I'll mention, which is timely, this is a project in downtown San Francisco, which we acquired and were pursuing entitlements prior to the pandemic. And this project was planned as a hotel, but we were also building the City of San Francisco a new fire station. And in a post-pandemic, you know, world, this project was not economically viable. But we went to the city and came up with a new plan that will still deliver a new $40 million fire station for the city, contribute to affordable housing nearby, and, you know, the city's working with us to essentially increase the heightened density of this site by two to three times what was previously allowed. And I think they're working with us because, you know, we've proven that we can deliver for them with the office building we've built and the housing we've built, and, you know, they're really working to advance this in record time as a result. And, you know, here in Santa Clara, you know, the last one I'll talk to, that, you know, we've certainly been frustrated with not being able to move this bigger project forward faster. But, you know, we started construction three years ago in the Clara district, and, you know, we've moved forward wherever it's feasible. We delivered almost 700 units of housing, and I think it just shows our ability to go from, you know, the rendering that you see in this image to the photo of the completed project that we just celebrated opening a few years, about a month ago. So we, you know, Steve said, we really appreciate our partnership with the city. We look forward to building on what we started in the Clara district and the momentum to continue realizing this long-term vision of creating a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood in North Santa Clara. And this refinement of our entitlements is a critical part of realizing that long-term vision and being able to move forward. I'll just quickly touch on, you know, as you heard, the project as approved is, was envisioned as a 5 million square foot mixed-use city center across from Levi's Stadium and a 4 million square foot office campus in the Northeast. The program was almost 5 and 1/2 million square feet of office with the remaining program of retail, residential, and hotel. And, you know, I think the key point is this SCMC variant that we're here to discuss tonight, it really retains the same essential mixed-use vision of the city center and of the downtown. And it really retains the same public realm vision of the project as it's currently approved, anchored by incredible gathering spaces, the city park in the north. But what it does is it takes that Northeast office campus and allows industrial, advanced manufacturing use there, moves the remaining office into the city center. And, you know, I think the three important things that this does from Related's perspective is, number one, it creates a program in the Northeast that we think we can move forward with today, and that's really the big driver of working with the city on this change over the past year-plus. Number two, it enhances the feasibility of the city center. The office that's in demand in Silicon Valley today is in downtown environments, not as much in the campus environment. So whether it's Santana Row, Santa Clara Square, downtown Sunnyvale, et cetera, placing 100% of that office in the city center, you know, we believe will enhance the viability of city center and our ability to do that as the office market recovers. And finally, the combination of, you know, a downtown mixed-use environment with office and advanced manufacturing R&amp;D uses, there are a lot of companies here that have space demands for both of those types of spaces. And this is a very unique project in being able to offer a one-stop solution for a company that may be looking for a corporate office campus and an R&amp;D solution in one neighborhood. And as far as we're aware, this would be the only project that would be able to offer that. And as far as we're aware, this would be the only project that would be able to offer that. So, you know, we think it's compelling, it's responsive to the needs of where the market's at today and allows us a path to move forward faster. With that, I will hand it back to Liz.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick and Steve, for the presentation. At this point, I think we're opening up to Q and A. We're going to take your questions and then gather our team and be able to respond to them, give you guys a break, and then come back from the break and respond to those questions at that time, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. So... I don't, I can't see the, who has raised their hand from the council dais? And I can't, I just have a request to speak, so I can't see. Council, who has questions? Councilmember Jane, we'll start with you. All right, I see him now, thank you.
Yeah, I was on the planning commission and even before this project was approved, I always questioned the value of the ENA, the Exclusive Negotiating Agreement. It seems to me that we should have bid this project out and maybe this project could have been divided into smaller projects and bid out to other developers that may have had other reasons to develop earlier than this. So I wanted to understand whether we're, I guess whether Related still needs 205 acres of land and whether we should be, what our opportunity is to divide this up. Then I see that Phases Three to Seven have no minimum development. That always bothered me. I mean, they could put up one house on the land. And of course, they're paying the ground lease for all that land. But still, they don't lose the ability to develop later, much later, by just putting up like one house. I don't like the minimums, so I wanted to understand the minimums. And then I also know that, you know, in 2016, we didn't have the NEXA study for affordable housing. But, you know, we've changed our affordable housing now to build more affordable housing. And I'm just wondering, you know, when you have a DA, of course, they're entitled to what was there when you signed the DA. But, you know, we've added new parking, bicycle parking requirements for residential. We've added more VMT reductions. You know, data centers have to be carbon-free. Does that still apply to this? I'm trying to understand how far the ENA goes. And so I wanted to know, really from staff, what we're allowed to change as a council in this agreement. And then I had another comment about how they were saying that there were extreme delays due to, you know, getting the water line approved over the landfill, doing the test piles and seeing if they leaked. But we've known that since 2016. I don't know why they didn't start doing that in 2016. And if four years from now means, four years earlier than now means that they only started doing that in 2021. So why did they wait so long before they started doing the test piles and the drinking water line? Because the reason why we gave them the ENA was because they said they knew how, kind of said that they knew how to develop over a landfill. And they were up to the challenges of developing on a landfill with the podium structure and such. But I think everyone in the community is concerned about the length of the delays. And I get that there's the, you know, the pandemic and the interest rates and the change of office uses and the change of retail. I get all that, but maybe somebody else, another developer, could have figured some of this out. So we're locked in with the ENA, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I just had a, three basic small questions. I appreciate that you went back through everything. I wanted to know if there was, if this changed our housing element that we got approval for, if that made any difference, if any of these changes would make a difference to that or if we built that in. The $122 per square foot, that slide went up a little fast and I saw ranges for different things. And I was trying to understand that and I wanted to go back and possibly look at that just so I could understand. And also just a comment about dealing with the state water board. Since I serve on the regional water boards and committees, I should send someone a sympathy card because I know what it's like to deal with them. And it is not easy. And often, we get more than one answer to a question, which is frustrating. And I can appreciate the frustration level for both the developer and for the staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Rachel Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the presenters. I appreciate all the feedback and reviving memories of 2016, basically. I was also on the planning commission and I did, as a resident, I did present to the council that this project should be not that heavy and we should, city should have retained the parcel one and parcel two, the BMX and other one. And I presented some fiscal studies at that time that even if we retain that, city will still make 89% of the general fund, what we were trying to make at that time, basically. So here we are, we are talking about those two parcels today, basically. But my questions are like, as per this agreement, like, we do know that Related has sort of one-sided agreement, like they take all the benefits, but city's not getting any benefit. Let me go back to the slide 18. We have those disposition and development agreement and annual rent. So the annual rents were based on the basis of 2016 numbers, basically. And here we are, I mean, 2025, nine years after that. If everything is being reset, everything is being renegotiated, I would like to renegotiate these Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, all the basic land rents, basically. So it should be, since 2016, the value of dollar has gone down, inflation has increased. So if it is costing for Related to build this development from $900 million to $1.3 billion as presented by the economic studies, our costs have also increased. So I don't want to stick to the what we signed in 2016 if we are renegotiating everything from economics point of view. I want to renegotiate all these rents also as per the current value of the money. I understand there have been economic factors or force majeure factors, but at the same time, when we are renegotiating. So how can we renegotiate the PowerPoint 19, all the rents, basically? That's my first question. Even on slide 20, we have those adjustments to be done at a later time of the agreements, basically, on year 15, 25, 35. So my other question is, although we approved the development agreement in 2016, if the Related does not take over any of those parcels, say for another two years or five years, when does the 99-year lease start? And when does these years, 15, 25, reset, rent reset increase by 10% hit at that time? Or is it from 2016 onward, when 15 years from that time? So that's my other question. On slide number 25, you know, we have some regional traffic fees to be charged. And on 26, the maximum amount which the regional developer maximum obligation is approximately $17.4 million. I again have the same question, like $17.4 million of $2016 is not what we are talking about. Like, I think we should be taking into account what the current value of the money is, how much, so $17 million of that is now, how much is that money now valued, including the inflation cost of living? So those things need to be increased also, basically. So our developer maximum obligation should be increased accordingly as per the current value of the money. Land value reflected in ground rent in $115 million as per slide number 28, as per our economic studies, basically. Despite all these factors, despite COVID, despite the cost of construction going high, the land values have gone higher since 2016. So I'm not sure why we are still taking the land value of our land as $115 million only, because proportionately, our land value has gone up too, basically. So I need some better economic analysis of this. That city should not be short-charged because if the developer is getting all those benefit on that current date, we should be getting those, our reimbursements as per the current rate too, basically. And same question, like ground rent equals fair market value, right? So the ground rent has to be readjusted as per our current study. Basically, that's on slide number 30, I think. And... Turn 36. There was a discussion about, oh, force majeure, like materially adverse economic conditions, right? And it mentioned that if the office vacancy is 15% or higher, that clause will hit. And if the retail vacancy is more than 10% at Stanford and Valley Fair Shopping Center, it will hit. So I want to know what are the current numbers on that? Like where we stand on those two parameters, basically? And historically, let's say for the last couple of years, what were the rates on those two parameters? My other question is, when Related has been successfully doing some of those other projects in different parts of the United States, even in California, why so much delay on this project, basically? I know there are force majeure conditions, but if you are able to do projects in other cities, L.A. or San Francisco, why are we not focusing on to get the development done on this project? Those are my questions for the timing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as, what was the date of, that the lawsuit was adjudicated? I know that sometimes it's difficult to go into ventures when that's not done. So what was that date? As far as Fire Station 10, I know that we don't have it yet and it's in Phase Two. But would there be any possibility it'd be like in Phase One C or some phase in between before Phase Two? And I understand the complexity of somewhat of the building in that area. When the school district built a three-campus school, K-12 environment, and they had to use pylons and, you know, it was a difficult process. Working with the state can be difficult. And I know they had to truck loads of, about 100 loads of dirt out of there because of naturally occurring asbestos. So definitely working with the state. Department of Water, I know we have our water treatment plant, which is producing very great, clean water to a certain extent. But in some filtration process, that is not being utilized as it should be. But as far as, the other question I had here was, I understand that there's different parcels and having one entity, which Related seems to be a very, very well-suited entity to be able to build on this from their past experience. What the city was able to do was to push for these entitlements. So as far as when things would be able to be done with the Scheme One C, what would be the earliest date for maybe groundbreaking for that, that One C scheme? As far as, is there an anticipated, if this were to be approved by the council, what date would that be as far as the timeframe for the groundbreaking for that? And I think that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cox.
I'll make mine very basic. I am understanding that Part B of this program today is going to tell us a little bit more about the potential amendment changes, right? So there'll be a greater scope on what the real changes entail. Okay, that's good. And then I think my other question was just around the fire station as well because with these unanticipated delays, District One has been left, I think, a greater, increased the response time by about two minutes in that area. So again, I'm wondering what the opportunity would be to move the urgency of the firehouse up. But thank you for the presentation and thanks for filling the new kids in.
Thank you. And I have a similar question about the fire station. And I know I was on the council, we approved this in 2016. So thank you for the refresher course on what we did way back when and the trials and tribulations we've been through since 2016. But now that a lot of Tasman East is being, you know, built and occupied, I always imagined Tasman East was going to come after or at the same time as Related Santa Clara Project. So I think it's just that important that that fire station be built because of the residences that we are, are going to be, the residents that are going to be occupying all the Tasman East buildings as well. So, and then with things that are coming up for us, I don't think, I'm not sure anything could be done in time for World Cup and Super Bowl for 2026 unless you can just pop up a fire station pretty quickly. Related probably can do that, right? So they're not smiling at me. So anyways, I think that, you know, my concern also is the fire station and getting it sooner rather than later because of the, as well as the other development that's happened out there. And also, the question I had was, when does the compensation for the police beat start? I know that they offered extra security, to pay for extra security costs out there, especially nights and weekends and others, but an extra police beat. When would that start as well? And I think that's it for the questions. Oh, put your light on if you want to ask a question. Councilmember Park.
Yeah, I have all those questions as well. I think that the questions that other council members have asked are pretty comprehensive in terms of some of the complaints that we're hearing about this project. That said, I mean, we looked at the phasing. We looked at the phasing that was approved by council. We looked at the phasing that was brought forward. And we see Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four. And Phase One is not first, it's not even second in terms of what we were doing. So that is, I understand things changed, but you did move on with other parcels. But my question is, why would you skip Phase One? Phase One is the number one thing that I even hear residents complain about not being done, coming to council, which is we do have a number of major events coming to our city. And Phase One would have been 100% a way to retain some of the people coming to our city from all over the world to get extra tax dollars. I mean, we can't set priorities. We understand that there are changes, but at some point, there is a plan that I would have hoped you worked with the city so that with all the other things that are happening, I mean, we've known about some of these plans for World Cup, for Super Bowl, for a number of years. And it's also something that, when I take a look at the rents that other council members have brought up, I mean, Phase One is the one that has no rent until takedown and, you know, a slightly increased rent after opening. know, slightly increased rent after opening. I mean, it can't be for the purpose of avoiding rent payments, but at the same time, it's, you know, it is the project, it is the phase that is most in mind to almost every single person in this city, especially if they're looking at, you know, what's happening next I do agree with the fire station, I mean, we agreed to take the fire station out, I didn't agree to that. I was here in council almost every single meeting that other, I was there in Planning Commission, almost every single meeting that Related came up as a resident. The city took, you know, pretty big measures to prepare this project for Related, including getting, you know, taking down Fire Station Ten, which was there, doing a closing businesses to speed up development for this project. I know that we had done a, we had actually closed and evicted businesses that were running, and we did that by force to prepare, because at the time, we were told that we needed this to be done because of timing, because of the plans that were being done. And then, six, seven, eight years later, to have nothing being built there and nothing prepared for, for the Super Bowl and a World Cup is disappointing. At the same time, I'll be honest, I want Related to be successful there. I want Related to have a great project for this city, I want to have a great entertainment district, and I thought Related is going to be a big part of that. But, I mean, timing is everything. Thank you.
Thank you. So, City Manager, would you like the break time now, or should we go to the public as well?
I think let's go to the public, and then we'll take a break after that.
Yeah, in case there's other questions as well. Thank you. So I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to make a statement, please let me know. Is there anyone here in the chambers first that would like to speak? Do we have any cards? Finn, no cards? All right, if not, I see Anthony online. Go ahead, unmute yourself. There you go, go ahead, Anthony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
All right, I'll be pretty short. Anthony Pasquale, President for Santa Clara City Firefighters. Plain and simple, the fire station was closed March first of 2020, and totally understand all the issues that happened, but to be honest, that fire station shouldn't have been shut down until there was another one to put those crews and those apparatus in before it was torn down. At this point, what is, what happened, happened. I think a good solution might be to bump that fire station build up to the soonest as possible, considering now with the Clara properties, there are some pretty high-level density, some senior living, affordable housing, which are hotbeds for calls. And the reality is, as right now, there is a delayed level of service to that level of town. So the ask would be to move that fire station build up as soon as possible, so that we can restore the level of service and be prepared for future development, be prepared for future construction on that side of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? If you'd like, please come forward, you're welcome to come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jaime Vasquez, I'm a representative for the North Cock Harpeners Union, Local 405. And I was going to wait till the end, but I mean, might as well say my speech now and a question I have due to. So as you consider this amendment to the Community Master Plan, we encourage you to also consider the importance of responsible construction practices. A project this magnitude will have long-term impacts, not just for the landscape, but the local workforce and the economy. I know you guys have been working on this for over 12 years, you know, it's been a long time, but you know, let's finish strong and do it right. We've seen in the past developments in the East Tasman, what happens when labor standards are not prioritized, right? Much like the project was awarded, contractors did not meet the expectations our community deserves. One exception, the concrete work was done by a responsible contractor who upheld strong labor practices, delivered a high-quality result. This is a chance to do better. We urge the city and Related Santa Clara to commit to working with responsible contractors, those who invest in local labor, support apprenticeship training, and provide fair wages and benefits. That's how we ensure this project benefits not only the developer, but broader Santa Clara community. And the question I had was, I seen it in the slide, took a picture real quick, from the project challenges, says that Department of Industrial Relations Public Works case, so just a question with that, I was trying to Google it right now, but if you guys can answer that if possible, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaime, appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, City Manager, how long do you need? Oh, we have somebody? Oh, Edward, go ahead, Edward.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to the Related project groundbreaking, and I know there's been numerous delays on this over the years. I was wondering also if there was an agreement to where there was a time limit to when the first phase would have to happen with Related. And another question is the Great America, I know we have a new owner for that, and I was wondering if the zoning would have to be changed, or if it's going to remain entertainment, and maybe have mixed-use restaurants, since there's been so many delays with Related, and we don't know really when it's going to happen again, when we can trust Related to really get things going, because I think it's really disappointing that we have to wait another 10 years for the Super Bowl to maybe finally get some entertainment restaurants in that phase. I guess it was supposed to be the first or second phase, and now I'm hearing it's going to be manufacturing, maybe, and we need to make money from manufacturing in order to get the next phase going for retail and restaurants. I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm hoping with the change in administration, maybe the economy will start picking up here pretty soon. President Trump did have a really good economy going for us in his first term, and I'm hoping he could turn it around this time around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edward. Anyone else? No? Okay. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. So we're going to come back at 7:55, like 13 minutes. 7:55. Thank you.
If everyone could take their seats, please. Okay, we all back? All right, very good. City manager, when you're ready.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. A number of really good questions, and so I will start off, but a number of members from our team will provide responses in addition to Related. And so we'll go in order. First, I want to say, staff recognizes that while a lot of work has been done, the public and the council are seeing exactly what we see, which is development really has not moved forward. And there are a lot of questions on why. And so certainly, all of your questions really get at that, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to have this study session before we talk about the potentiality of Scheme C. So with that, Councilmember Jane asked a number of questions that, first off, discuss, is it, why do we still have an exclusive negotiating agreement? And can we do something else, right? One, it's important to note that we have a DDA and a development agreement, and Related is not in default. There are very valid force majeure and adverse economic conditions that have pushed off the dates by which they have to develop. And so we have an agreement that we are living up to, and the other side is living up to the terms. And you should know that there is a formal process where they provide a reason for force majeure or the adverse economic conditions that is received by staff. It's reviewed by the city attorney's office. And so we do confirm that, in fact, those conditions have been met, which pushes off the dates. The other thing that I think we've said here a number of times, which is, this is a very, very large site. It's a large site that requires significant underground infrastructure and horizontal infrastructure before you go vertical. And this site really demands one large master developer. It's really not the site because of what you have to do to cap the landfill, where you can break off portions in smaller chunks. You really need a master developer to provide all of the horizontal infrastructure before you go vertical. In addition, while Related did not say the dollar amount that they have spent on this project, we know that it far exceeds the double-digit million dollars. And if our real interest is to obtain vertical development as soon as possible, staff really believes that continuing our partnership with Related is the fastest way. If we were even able to switch to another developer, it would almost be like hitting the reset button, which we think would not be within the city's core interests, which is having development occur faster, again, with the, or additionally, with the realization that this development really requires a well-heeled financial partner. And there are very few developers in the country that can do this type of work, given just the breadth of the project. And what we also know, even when you take out the global pandemic, as you'll hear a little bit later on today from our economic and fiscal consultant, the project as entitled is not buildable now because of the economic conditions and where development is. And so there's a lot of legitimate reasons for, we could parse out this delay versus that delay or this adverse condition. But where we sit right now, and we know what's happening in the development sector, not just regionally but nationally, a project of this scale, even when you take out the landfill, is not feasible. And so I know Related will talk about that, and that's one of the reasons why they're requesting a pivot on a portion of the site, but really keeping that city center intact. Next, there was a question related to minimum development thresholds with parcels seven or phases three and seven, parcels, phases three and seven. And I'll turn that to Anna.
Okay, thank you. There are some minimums that do apply to Phase Three with respect to the retail. But our expectation is that in order for the developer to take down a ground lease, they, there would have to be in the works a critical mass of development planned, that it would be worth their while to prepare a development area plan, start paying rent, give us a construction schedule, a financing plan, and then they would have an obligation to move forward with that development once they took the ground lease down. So while there may be no minimums, and perhaps Related can speak to this as well, but it seems that just because of the economies of scale and the costs that would be involved, and the many requirements that the city has before they can move forward with any particular phase, that there would be a substantial amount of development in each phase.
Okay. The next question was relating to permits with the Regional Quality Water Board, and when that work started, I think there was a statement by Related that it took approximately four years. And there was a question, why didn't that work begin sooner? And so we'll turn that over to Related.
Yes. I would make a distinction between the timeframe when we started a formal application for a particular approval versus the timeframe that we started the actual analysis and engineering work to understand what the issues were. We had to start that much, much earlier than when we actually made an application with the formal, you know, engineering package in hand. The city staff was very involved with us through that entire process of understanding what the issues were before we could make the formal application. So we really got underway with the landfill analysis work and the drinking water engineering work, literally, right after we got the entitlements.
There were additional questions by Councilmember Jane related to our next study for affordable housing, a statement that a number of things have changed. We have new carbon reduction goals. And essentially, how far can we go to renegotiate some of those terms? And the answer to that is, we'll talk about the items that are under negotiation and that we're talking about in Part Two, but because Related is not in default, to change any of the terms requires a meeting of the minds of the two parties, and both parties agreeing. And so there are not really terms that we cannot change if both parties come together and agree. And we'll talk about where we are at a high level in Part Two. Councilmember Hardy had a question in regard to the housing element and how this site relates to our housing element. And I'll turn that over to our Community Development Director, Afshah Hamid.
Thank you for that question. The project is part of the adopted housing element for all 1,680 units, and it is part of one of the Housing Opportunity Sites.
The next question by Councilmember Hardy was in regard to the price per square foot that was listed at $122. And I'll turn that over to David. And there was a slide, David, that discussed that. Do we remember that? If you can bring up Slide 31.
It was, I looked it up. It's 15.
Slide 15.
I looked at the pages.
Oh. It's 31. Go to 31.
Yeah.
Oh, you're, yeah.
That's what you meant?
Yes.
The objective of this slide is to compare the total effective land cost that Related has, considering both the ground rent and the costs that are necessary to construct over this landfill that are extraordinary to the site, that wouldn't be incurred elsewhere. So we combine those two numbers, 900 million, that was the SBA, plus 115 million value reflected in the ground rent, for a total of a billion. When you convert that to a per-square-foot-of-land basis, it's $122 per square foot of land. And so we use that as a means to understand whether the land value that's reflected in the ground rent combined with those extraordinary costs is market rate as of the time of the DDA. And those green bars that you see there, those are the range of market rate land transactions on other sites that we looked at to compare to. So if we're thinking of, you know, this site, $122 per square foot. Other land sales we looked at, for office, were lower than that. Residential, lower than that. Hotel, it was sort of in that range. So those diamonds at the top and bottom are sort of the upper and lower bounds of the sales we looked at.
Okay. Next, Councilmember Raj Jahal had a number of questions, or first, a number of comments related to the project when the council member was on the Planning Commission, and desires around the city retaining some of the parcels. Again, right now, we have a valid DA, development agreement, and DDA, and the developer's not in default. And so totally understand those comments, but really, we have valid contracts that we're with Scheme C, discussing and negotiating changes to that. And so I think some of the exclusions that may have been desired early on are not possible at this time, because we're really bound by the terms of those contracts and in terms that both parties can agree to. And again, I think back to the prior comment about the amount of horizontal infrastructure that's required for a site like this, where most of it is actually on the landfill. The ability to have one master developer do that is really, is really critical. And if there's anything that I've left out, I'm looking around at our partners. So with that, the council member made a number of statements around the belief that there's a lot of the agreement that is one-sided. Certainly, understand that interpretation. One of the things that we did go through in Slides 23 to about 26 are a number of the benefits for the city. And so those are benefits of maintenance of parks, payment of certain landfill costs, replacement of Fire Station 10, enhanced police services for Weekend and 19. And so while there are benefits within the DDA, totally understand desires to have more benefits for the city. Again, we're bound by the terms of the contract, and we'll talk about those areas that we're negotiating coming up. A number of comments about rent. And so rent, ground rent, has increased significantly from 2016 to now, was a comment that was made. What you'll see in the presentation that's coming up is that our independent consultant has taken a look at ground rents for today, and ground rents are actually lower. So if we were to negotiate the agreement today, we actually would obtain a lower ground rent than what we obtained in 2016. And so within the agreement, there's pluses and minuses. There's a higher ground rent, but there's not benefits on this side, and there's always pluses and minuses. But strictly on ground rent, it's, from staff's analysis and our consultant analysis, it's not accurate that ground rents are higher today than they were in 2016. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. There was a question around Slide 20 with regard to, when do the ground rent payments start? Is it now or from 2016? Or, I'm sorry, when does the term of the ground rent start? It's actually from takedown. So based on when the land is taken down, that's when the term starts. And the resets correspond to that takedown date. Going forward, there was a question on force majeure and the vacancy rate, as well as the, some of the other force majeure provisions. I'll turn that over to David, and I think the question was, do we have what those stats were in prior years?
So we don't have all the prior So we don't have all the prior years, but I'll cite a few figures. So there's two different metrics. One is Class A vacancy across Silicon Valley from a specific brokerage report. And currently, that vacancy rate sits at 24.7%. The threshold for economic force majeure is, or materially adverse economic conditions is 15%, so almost 10% above that threshold still. The threshold for retail cites vacancy rates for two specific shopping centers, the Stanford Shopping Center and Valley Fair. And the threshold is if those shopping centers have a vacancy rate more than 10%. And last time we checked, which I think is, was in the fall, was they were at 0%. So we were below those thresholds. So it's only with respect to office that we have the materially adverse condition.
Next question is for Related, and the question was, if Related has been successful elsewhere, why have they not been able to move forward on this particular site? Looks like we have Nick Vanderlum.
Yeah, I think, and before diving into that, I did just want to clarify, you know, the Northeast in the Scheme C and moving forward on Phase One in City Center are completely independent. Our desire is to start both, either one or both, as soon as possible. Shifting to kind of Phase One, I think we share the council's disappointment that City Center has not started and Phase One has not started. I think there's, I would argue there's no one more motivated than the team members here in Related to see that start. The company has invested tens of millions of dollars of its own capital with no outside investors in getting designs to construction drawings, you know, permit-ready, ready to move forward, and we have no way to recoup that capital without starting Phase One. So there's immense pressure on us to move forward on Phase One as fast as possible. You know, the reality is, we started those other projects, all of them, before 2022, when we had the steepest increase in interest rates in 40 years. And it was really the, I think, the combination of the property type, office and hotel, and the increase in interest rates, which effectively wiped out the availability of debt and equity. You know, at the same time, we were raising money for Tasman East, which there was more capital available for residential because there's much deeper demand. We scoured the globe. I mean, the country, the globe, we had a small army of people calling anyone and everyone to try to find capital to start that Tasman Office Building and that Hotel. You know, that first-phase project was over a billion dollars of capital. And, you know, as you may be aware, we actually had a pre-lease. We had a tenant, which is very rare in Silicon Valley, to pre-lease an office building. It was 35% pre-leased to First Republic Bank. You know, they, of course, you know, had an unfortunate, you know, event in their business, that pre-lease went away. But even with the pre-lease, there was not capital for speculative office development, given we still had to lease the other two-thirds of the building when, you know, vacancy rates went from below 10 to 25% plus, and, you know, hotels were empty. You know, and still, you know, still even today are far from recovered from where they were in 2019. So, you know, I think those are really the drivers. It was the product type of office and hotel and the timing of raising capital. Those other examples we had, some of them we raised, two of those we raised capital prior to the pandemic. You know, Tasman East, because it was residential, we were able to start just before, you know, really the capital dried up. So the last thing I would say is, you know, we continue to speak every week to, you know, brokers at CBRE who represent Related out in the market and have a pulse on any tenant who's looking for space, you know, as well as other brokers. And for the last two years, it's been pretty quiet. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of tenants, you know, looking for new space. That has definitely changed, I would say, in the last six months or so. And we need to pre-lease probably at least 50% of that first office building to be able to capitalize the project and start construction. And we are laser-focused on doing that. We're working every day, and we are meeting with tenants to try to find, you know, there's not a lot of them, but there's more every day out there. So extremely high priority for our company and for the team here on the ground to find a way to get Phase One moving ASAP, and we share that disappointment. Thank you.
From Councilmember Gonzalez, there was a question around when was the San Jose lawsuit settled? And I'll turn that over to Anna Shimko.
Thank you. So the lawsuit was filed in about July of 2016, and the judgment in the trial court was entered on November 8, 2017, completely and totally in our favor. The City of San Jose appealed in January of 2018, and in that same month, we reached a settlement with the city and brought the lawsuit to a close.
Next, there were a number of comments with regard to Fire Station 10. Just know that staff very much shares that sentiment, and it has been and will continue to be a subject of our conversations for a potential adjustment to the entitlement that we bring before you for Scheme C. There was a question with regard to when can Scheme C be started? I know we're going to talk about that later, but I will ask Related to come back up just to give a quick overview of the thinking on when that project could be started if reapproved.
You know, I think if, once, if Scheme C is approved, we would get to work immediately. There are a number of long-lead items regarding the landfill, which were completed for the City Center parcel that have not yet been completed for Scheme C. You know, there's several million dollars of investment to do in test piles and making sure we fully understand the landfill conditions, but our goal would be to move forward with all of that long-lead work, you know, while designing buildings, going through the DAP approval process, the architectural review process. So, you know, I think it's, we could, you know, be under construction, you know, within two years on that Northeast, on moving infrastructure forward, building buildings, and, you know, in a best-case scenario, I think be open in late 2028.
Okay. Nick, and before you sit down, there was another question from Councilmember Park around why skip Phase One with a preference for Scheme C? I think you've addressed that, but will you just touch on that point?
Yeah, yeah, just to be clear, there's no intent to skip Phase One. Again, if we can, if we can, you know, find an office tenant to commit to Phase One, we would start that immediately, and we could start it faster than Scheme C because we have, you know, for that first office building, a, you know, we've completed construction drawings that are essentially permit-ready. So we could move that forward faster. But the office component was always the main economic driver, and it really subsidized the retail. And that's, you know, how it's worked at a lot of, you know, projects like Santa Clara Square, for example. So we need that critical mass of office to get started, to be able to do, you know, the retail and get Phase One moving. But there's no intent to skip Phase One if we can move it forward faster.
Okay. And then lastly, we had comments from both the mayor and Kathy about Fire Station 10. And then the mayor had a question around when would the extra compensation for police start with regard to the extra services, and that is after construction. Related, if they would like any extra beats for nights and weekends, would have to pay for that. And so that is not envisioned until after construction is completed, and I see Related nodding their head to that effect. Lastly, just want to recognize that there were two public comments. One was from a member of our fire union discussing Fire Station 10. We've addressed that. Another was from a member of a labor group. There was a question embedded in that with regard to the Department of Industrial Relations, Public Works case, and so that was on a slide. We did not touch on it significantly. Anna, would you talk about the status of that at a high level?
Sure. So at a high level, a complaint was brought to the Department of Industrial Relations to the effect that based on the transaction that we have with the developer, the entire project should be paying prevailing wage. And in the end, it was decided by, well, not in the end, it's still going on, it was decided by the Department of Industrial Relations that there was reason for prevailing wage to be paid on this project. And that decision was appealed administratively to the Director of the DIR by Related, and the city has weighed in throughout the process with facts and information as requested. And the DIR has not yet acted on that appeal. So we're waiting.
Okay. And lastly, there was another public comment. I think we've addressed all the salient points that were mentioned. There was, I think, connection to Great America and their closure and just desires for development in this area to kick off. So with that, Mayor, I think we've addressed all the questions.
I think we have one more question with Councilmember Jane.
Perfect, thank you.
Is your hand up for this?
It seems like the DA is still in effect, so they're entitled to all of the affordable housing provisions that were in place at that time. So I guess what I'm wondering is, what is the council actually doing when we approve Scheme C? What does that really mean in terms of, you know, what our rights are in respect, with respect to that? And then, you know, from Scheme A to B to C, it's always been 9.1 million square feet. Is there a floor for that? Overall, I know that our consultant, Anna, had said that they, it seemed to me like they, there was no minimum on parcels or phases three to seven, but I didn't quite understand the explanation why there's effectively a minimum. And I'm still struggling with that, and what would that minimum would be? And then I believe Phase One has already been taken down, and so then there are fixed timeframes as to how many years after that Phase Two, Three, Four have to be taken down? Are those clocks ticking now, or what is going on with those?
Sure. So three questions there, one around timeframes, two around Scheme C, and the third one around project minimums.
I had one more.
And the fourth one now.
Well, I heard that the ground rents have not gone up, but our park impact fees from 2015 to now have gone from essentially 30,000 to 40,000. So they've actually gone up 30% in the last 10 years. So I can't reconcile why ground rents haven't changed.
Perfect, okay. So with regard to ground rent, we will address that in Part Two. Also, with regard to your question around Scheme C and what action the council will be taking, taking when that comes back, we'll address that in Part Two in just a minute. With regard to timeframes, you're absolutely right. Phase One has been taken down. In our speak, what that means is that Related has started to ground lease that parcel from the city and is paying an annual rent payment. There was a slide in the presentation, there are certainly a date by which they need to take down Phase Two that is currently being extended because of the adverse economic condition. That date is in September 2027, and so that's the last remaining date, and then the other dates for the other phases tear off from there. So then your last question is in regard to project minimums, and I'll ask Anna to discuss that.
So you are absolutely correct, Councilmember Jane, that there are not minimums on those later phases. And my only point was that while there are not requirements of minimums, there are kind of economic realities of minimums, and I think perhaps Related would be better poised to respond to that. If that's okay.
Just to expand on what Anna said, I think she's right that the practical reality of, oh, sorry, the practical reality of, I would say, three things. Amount of ground rent, you simply can't justify paying a million and a half, $2 million of ground rent on a building, a very small building. Infrastructure costs, you know, the infrastructure costs in putting in the streets are tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars per phase. You need a critical mass of development, or it's never going to be economically viable. And the third thing I would say is it just wouldn't be consistent with the MCP. So the, you know, the zoning itself, which has building, you know, typologies and standards, we still have to comply with that. So I think the city would have grounds if we weren't consistent with the MCP, which contemplates larger-scale buildings on these blocks. It would need to be consistent with that. I think those kind of three factors all lead to the practical reality that you're going to have to have a larger critical mass, or it wouldn't be developed.
Now time for Part Two.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. As we transition into Part Two of today's presentation, we will focus on the proposed amendments to the Master Community Plan under what is referred to as Scheme C. This section will highlight how the project has evolved in response to the current market conditions and shifting land use demands. Staff will provide an overview of the proposed land use changes, including the introduction of light industrial uses, modification to circulation plans and refinements to the project density and phasing. This portion of the presentation is designed to provide the council with the necessary background to understand the proposed direction and to provide feedback to staff. To start, we will have David DeWesima present on the current economic conditions.
Thank you. So we have a series of slides that walk through economic conditions related to the different uses that are included in the project. So we start with office here, and I think as we've all come to appreciate and has been alluded to over the meeting already, that this has been a use that's been impaired significantly by the pandemic and how it's changed the workplace. The vacancy rate is 22% in Santa Clara, and as we discussed earlier, it's 24.7% for Class A space across Silicon Valley. The market value of office space has declined substantially, and that's driven both by that vacancy and the uncertainty around the future of office space, but also because of the higher cost of capital has also contributed to that decline in value. Combine that lower value with the higher costs that we now have following the pandemic, you know, something like 30% plus increase in costs, and you don't see much new office space starting construction now or anywhere across the valley. This shows, this bar chart, it's retail square feet under construction over time across Santa Clara County. Around the 2016 time of the DDA, you can see there was pretty robust level of development activity occurring at that point in time. That slowed to almost nothing where we are today, and that's driven by a contraction in demand for retail space driven by a lot of different trends, including, you know, online shopping and things like that, population loss, inflation, et cetera. This shows multifamily, and we've had actually a long period where multifamily was fairly strong, but that has really shifted in the past year or two to the point where you're seeing not very many multifamily projects start construction. And there's a couple factors behind that. One very important one is just the high cost of capital, higher interest rates. That has both made construction financing more expensive, but it also has impacted the value of the completed apartment projects, you know, once they're built, to the point where you now have values that in a lot of cases are less than the cost to construct. And so you don't see that construction activity as you see on the chart. The hotel market in Silicon Valley is heavily driven by business travel. That business travel has not come back from the pandemic in full yet. That blue line you see there overlaid on that chart, that is revenue per available room. So where we are today, this is an average across the whole county, a little above $120 per night per available room. That is still not higher than 20 That is still not higher than 2015. And of course, since that time, the cost to build a hotel room has risen. The revenue is still not back to 2015. So it's a pretty tough situation. And those red bars, those are rooms under construction. You can see that very robust right before the pandemic, and now not much, if anything, under construction in the hotels sector. Industrial, data centers, that has been different. This shows completions of industrial and data center space across the county. And 2024, 2025 has actually been banner years in that. It's, of course, not immune to the broader, you know, factors like interest rates, but have overall been pretty robust. In particular, if you can get the power, data centers. AI is driving a lot of demand for those, and cloud computing as well. And so those have been, you know, a strong sector. All right. And now I will pass it to Namisha Argwal.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you speak?
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I will go over the proposed entitlements. So in January 2024, Related submitted an application to amend the approved Master Community Plan that was approved in 2016. This amendment would introduce a new Scheme C. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, the approved MCP included a land use Scheme A and Scheme B. This amendment would introduce a new Scheme C. So this slide explains the similarities in the Scheme C with the approved MCP. Like the approved MCP or the Master Community Plan, it will include development of five parcels implemented in phases. And the total development area would remain the same, at total allowable development area will remain the same at 9.16 million gross square feet for all the parcels. Now, looking at the key differences in the Scheme C, proposed under Scheme C from approved MCP. The Scheme C introduces new land use classification of light industrial uses on the northeastern parcels that are highlighted in blue over there. Those are Parcels One and Two. Because the density on Parcels One and Two will be decreasing, so to maintain the overall development of 9.16 million square feet, the density of the allowed uses in the city center parcels will be increased. That's what Scheme C is proposing. With the introduction of light industrial uses on Parcels One and Two, the northeast parcels, the site circulation layout will change. And the access to the site will change. To reduce the truck traffic going from the Tasman Drive to the, through the Tasman East residential development, the Scheme C proposes to eliminate the previously approved Lick Mill Boulevard Extension vehicular connection. However, the pedestrian and the bike connection will still be retained. Another change would be the Second Street Bridge, which was proposed previously connecting the city center to the northeast parcels. That will be removed because now with the industrial uses, less traffic is expected to go over to the northeastern parcels. Scheme C also includes comprehensive light industrial design guidelines to provide a streamlined review of the design. This slide shows a comparison, land use comparison between the approved land uses and the proposed land uses. As you see, highlighted in blue, the biggest change is on the northeast parcels, Parcels One and Two, where it was previously proposed to be developed as office campuses, and now it is proposed to be developed with the light industrial uses. Here is a side-by-side comparison of the approved site plan and what is proposed under Scheme C. As you see, the site layout on the northeastern parcels have changed, and so is the access. This table here provides a comparison between the Scheme A and Scheme B that were approved under the MCP and the new Scheme C. The columns to the right quantify the difference between the different schemes. If we look at the bottom-most line, which says the total project, we see that has remained the same at 9.16 million gross square feet under Scheme C as it was in Scheme A and Scheme B. Looking at the city center mixed-use parcels, four and five, the office development has increased, and so has the residential development is proposed to be increased under Scheme C. And that is to accommodate the reduced density under the, on the northeastern parcels. And as mentioned earlier, the northeastern parcels, the office development has been replaced by the industrial development of 1.6 million gross square feet. Looking at the permitted uses under Scheme C, for Parcels One and Two, light industrial uses are permitted, and so is the small power plant exemption data centers, SPPE. To explain that a little bit, this terminology is consistent with the California Energy Commission's definition for the data centers that have a capacity of 50 megawatts, between 50 megawatts and 99 megawatts. Also allowed are the incidental uses, such as retail, restaurant, personal services, and offices. And also the incidental and accessory buildings supporting any permitted uses, but that is capped at 10% of the maximum floor area for each parcel. Lastly, the public and/or private parks and open spaces are permitted uses. A minor use permit is required for the non-SPPE data centers. And ancillary data centers, as the name suggests, also requires a minor use permit. And as the name suggests, ancillary data centers are data centers that are proposed with another primary use. To expand on a little bit on the minor use permit process, it requires sending out notices to the abutting properties, and the approval is done by the Community Development Director. If there are any concerns or requests for hearing received by anyone through those notices, then the Community Development Director is required to conduct a hearing. This slide goes over, summarizes the review process for the data centers. So the small power plant exemption data centers are listed as permitted uses on Parcels One and Two under Scheme C. And the reason being that they require an extensive environmental review by the California Energy Commission as the lead agency. These data centers would also require review by the city departments to add appropriate conditions of approval through the Project Clearance Committee review. And the approval is by the Community Development Director. Similar to the SPPE data centers, non-SPPE data centers also require an environmental review and the Project Clearance Committee review to add appropriate mitigation measures and conditions of approval. And they will be approved through a minor use permit process, which is approved by the CDD Director. Lastly, the ancillary data centers also require an, also require an environmental review. They are limited to 20% of the constructed industrial building square footage and a maximum total collective power draw of nine megawatts, subject to availability of power by the Silicon Valley Power. They will also be approved through a minor use permit and will be approved with a, with a primary use. So this kind of sums up the proposed Scheme C development. Lastly, I would like to note that the Related Companies hosted a project update meeting on Thursday, September 12th, in 2024 of last year, at the Northside Laboratory, to share information about the proposed amendment to Related Santa Clara's Master Community Plan and an anticipated timeline. And this was attended by about 40 members of the community. And now I will hand it over to Anna for the next set of slides.
Thank you.
Thanks, Namisha. So we want to briefly talk about some of the terms that have been under discussion with respect to Scheme C and changes that could be made to the DDA, the Development Agreement, the Master Community Plan, et cetera. So our discussions with Related have been led by Jovan Grogan, of course, and with a lot of input from Glenn Gugans. And these meetings continue and will be very well informed by the feedback that we've already gotten today and that I think we will continue to get this evening. So first off, we have discussed rent. And the ground rent would not be reduced at all from the deal that we already have in the DDA. And as David will explain to you in a couple of moments, that ground rent is judged by KMA to equal or exceed what market-level rent would be today for the parcels at the uses that they would be proposed for under Scheme C. The one exception is that, as Namisha was just telling you, there would be the possibility of data centers on the industrial lands. And Related has agreed that any land that would be devoted to data center use would actually pay rent at two times the rent that would otherwise be charged under the ground leases. Next, we are discussing the schedule of performance. As I mentioned earlier this evening, Phases One and Two have to be taken down and moved on first at this point. We would be altering the schedule of performance to allow Parcels One and Two to move forward in advance of Parcels One, if that occurs, and in advance of Parcel, I mean, Phase One. Even I get confused and I go backwards. So in advance of Phase One and in advance of Phase Two. We are also discussing, given that this is a big pivot for the city, having some hard and fast dates and timeframes that Parcels One and Two would need to start development under Scheme C. However, with the pursuit of Scheme C, while force majeure could still occur, there would be no materially adverse economic conditions that could be applied to delay the development of Scheme C. Because those metrics, as we have discussed, apply to retail and office development, both of which are drivers of the city center, that would not apply to the industrial development. We have extensively discussed the, a connection between Tasman East and the city center. There currently exists the Golf Cart Bridge. It's substandard, and all have agreed that it should not be retained. But the terms we've been negotiating would have Related pay for a feasibility study and schematic design for a replacement connection between the city center and the industrial parcel that would also allow a connection that feeds into Tasman East. And Related would reserve the area within Parcel Two that would be needed for the landing pad for such a bridge. With respect to impact fees, we've discussed, of course, that under the Development Agreement, there is a period of time that the development impact fees are vested. However, for Scheme C, because that was not anticipated in 2016, the development of the industrial uses on Parcels One and Two would be subject to the development impact fees as and when otherwise do under the city's impact fee programs whenever Scheme C comes forward. Also, with respect to impact fees, we have, as I mentioned earlier, regional impact fees. For instance, a dollar a square foot of office. And because the 1.6 million of industrial development on Parcels One and Two would substitute for office, we would insert a $1 a square foot fee for industrial development, for the regional fees. As to affordable housing, another topic we discussed this evening, the conversations we've had with Related, we very much urged that the city's current rubric be applied. And indeed, the transaction agreements would provide that for housing developed on Phases Two and Three, the affordability level would be, instead of at 10% of the units, it would be at 15% of the units, at 100% AMI, instead of our current deal of 10% of the units, at 120% of AMI. Then with respect to the fire station, those discussions continue between the city and Related. We have discussed advancing the design phase and the monies for the design phase for the fire station, and having a link, currently, the time within which Fire Station 10 has to be constructed is tied to Phase Two. And we are discussing having a link to the earlier of that Phase Two date or a certain period of time, a certain amount of development on Parcels One and Two. So that if the industrial development advances, the Fire Station 10 would advance too. And we're continuing to have those conversations. Last, we, the city staff, have found that the processing of the development area plans, getting them through all of the staff and getting the conditions together and getting it ultimately up to the city council for review and approval has been a bit too short for our liking. And so we have renegotiated the timeframes that would be in the Master Community Plan for processing development area plans. And that would apply whether it is for the industrial development on Parcels One and Two or any of the rest of the development area plans coming forward in the future. So that is where we are, and we look forward to your comments. And I'm going to turn it back over to David to talk money again.
Thank you.
So this slide is an update of something you've seen already. So earlier in the presentation, we looked at effective land costs back in 2016 compared to land values at that time. And the conclusion was that in 2016, the city was getting at least fair market value for its land. This updates that to today, and the same conclusion holds. If you look at the $115 million that's reflected in the ground rent and those extraordinary costs we've spoken of inflated to today, they get up to $1.3 billion, probably, probably at least. That's $167 per square foot effective land cost that Related is bearing through this project, including both the ground rent and those landfill costs. We again have the green bars comparing to land sale data that we look for in the market. And this is more recent data. This is updated data today. Looking at relevant to Scheme C, industrial and data center land sales, we see the upper end of that is about $133 per square foot, maybe 140 if you look hard. But that is still less than our effective land cost of 167. If, it's hard to find comparables for office, retail, and hotel, anything the scale of this project because of the feasibility constraints for those uses that we talked about earlier. So there's not, there's not good data because there's not feasibility and those transactions are not therefore happening. Residential, as we've talked about, has been stronger for a longer period of time. Residential, as we've talked about, has been stronger for a longer period of time. The most relevant sale that we saw in 20, was in 2025, so just earlier this year for multifamily, it was in the $80 a square foot range. Now, if you look earlier in time, you will find sales that are higher when the market was a bit better, even north of $200 a square foot. And you'll find sales north of $200 a square foot for townhomes, but that, of course, is not what we're talking about here. So I, I think the, the bottom line is that it's, it's hard to see a very strong argument for increasing the rent with, with the data we have in the, in the market today. Notwithstanding, as was mentioned earlier, we, we do have the proposal to double the ground rent for any land that's used for a data center. Now we'll move on to fiscal. Okay? So this, this is a summary of net fiscal impact upon buildout, assuming the, the uses that are proposed under Scheme C. So the left-hand bar is all general fund revenues to the city, property taxes, vehicle license fees, hotel taxes, sales taxes, all upon completion. And then on the right-hand column, we have our costs totaling $8.4 million, police, fire, public works, and other expenses. Those costs, I should point out, reflect some of the benefits that the city has earned through the DDA, including Related taking responsibility in terms of the cost of maintaining neighborhood parks, right? So we don't have a big park expense in here because of, of that provision. Same on the police service expenses. We do have some city police service expenses, but there's a, a limit to those because of the terms of the DDA. So overall, a $20.6 million net general fund surplus upon buildout without including ground rent. Now, if you do include ground rent as part of the benefits you're getting, we add another $7.5 million to that, 28.1 million total. Now, I should say that, look, this, this does assume buildout, right? You have to get all the uses there to get there, and you have to get, you know, the quality of development that, that is, is envisioned here to, to get to those totals, of course. This breaks it out by parcel. Parcels 1 and 2, where the industrial is envisioned, that, that has the, a smaller net positive than the other phases, but it does remain a net positive, 800,000 without grand rent, ground rent, or 3.3 million if you do include it. The net positives are far, far higher in the phases where you have those hotels and, and retail uses to generate that sales tax and hotel tax. Comparing Scheme A versus Scheme C, they generate about the same net fiscal positive if we assume under Scheme A that the minimum retail improvements under the DDA are constructed. So 800,000 square feet of, of retail in both cases. If instead, we look at in Scheme A, the full 1.5 million square feet of retail and assume that Related, rather than do the minimum, does that full 1.5, then Scheme A is a $4.5 million greater net positive. And then I'm going to pass it back to Liz.
All right, so we're getting close to the end. But before I go to this slide, I think I might invite Related to come up. They have a couple of slides that they want to present, and then we'll, we'll finish up with this slide. So let me advance the slide.
Thank you, Liz. We actually don't have any additional slides. With, with everything that's going on tonight, all the information, data, updates, refreshing memories, we're all in favor of it. We think that's very good, very helpful. We, we look forward to the next couple of steps, Planning Commission and City Council. One thing that, in my experience, is, I think, very important in these incredibly complex projects and very, very challenging economic and financial times. Don't kid yourselves, we are in uncharted territory at a national and a state level, in our opinion. And in those times, we think it's really important to rely heavily on the judgment of professionals who've been through these things before. And I think on, on a number of the key important points that have been discussed tonight, your staff and your consultant team are giving you some very good, strong advice about how to proceed and continue this partnership with us in the most positive way possible. We're going to keep pushing and pushing and pushing just as hard as we can to make this project a success as soon as we can. And you have our commitment in doing that. So thank you for your time and effort and patience.
Thank you.
All right. So before we go to Q and A, I just want to thank, you know, the council's time, mayor your time, and also city staff for being here to support us, and Related for presenting today. As you've heard tonight, that the Relais Santa Clara project involved extensive planning, coordination, and adaptation over many years. The proposed Scheme C presents a refinement of the existing vision, one that responds to evolving economic conditions, development trends, and response to, and our community priorities, while continuing to deliver long-term benefits to the city. The study session has been an opportunity to walk through the history of the project, the current entitlements, and the proposed amendments in detail. It also sets the stage for upcoming meetings. So we have a, I'm sorry, I'll go back to that slide too, so you can have it. So we have a Planning Commission meeting right now scheduled for June 11th, and we anticipate bringing back this project to you in July of '25. And that's all I have for today, so I guess we can move into Q and A.
Very good. Thank you, Liz. All right, we're going to start with Councilmember Jane.
So related to this slide, and actually Slide 68, I think I heard Namisha say that there's new land use classifications, which means that we're creating new zoning codes, zoning definitions or categories. Is that true, that covers data centers and warehouses? So I wanted to understand that. The second was, so council will have to approve new zoning maps or, or categories. Then on Slide 70, it actually so, shows that in the office park area, there was parkland in between the, some of the office buildings, which is gone now in the proposed site plan. So are we losing parkland in this new definition? I know we have that big park that is going to be over in the 35 acres, but I've always complained about there's not enough parkland in Tasman East for the residents of Tasman East. So it seems like some of that parkland in the original schemes was closer to Tasman East than what the new parkland is going to be. And then, as I think everyone knows, that our climate action plan is very aggressive in terms of having data centers use carbon-free electricity and minimal amounts of water. And those are key concerns of our residents, key concerns of me, and I think this council. So I wanted to understand if in this new zoning definition, that that, that could be included in there. I'm pleased that we're, you know, we're going to more affordable housing, 15%. I wish it were more like at lower levels, like we're doing at Patrick Henry, 5% at extremely low, 5% at low, and 5% at moderate. So I just wanted to understand these new land zoning categories that we're going to be approving, and what they cover, and where they might be applied elsewhere in the city. And then for the warehouses, I wanted to understand, what are we going to do about diesel trucks and the pollution associated? Is that in the EIR for that use? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So I have a few questions. First of all, we are reducing total square footage on Parcel 1 and 2 from 3.36 to 1.6 as per the presentation, right? And I know we got some finance numbers with collective, with ABC collectively, but I'm comparing like as per the previous agreement, we had around property taxes of 2.187 projected for Parcel 1 and 2 only. And I want to detail only about Parcel 1 and 2. What impact fiscally will it have if we just consider Parcel 1 and 2? Because keeping in view the projections on Phase 2, we don't, I don't foresee that happening anytime soon. So I'm not envisioning, I don't go 10 years out there, but I want to envision what will be our financial gain on this particular parcel, 5 and 6, basically. So that's my question. Because previous property taxes only were around 2.18, and I think the property taxes will reduce now because we are reducing the square footage almost less than half of what we were envisioning, basically. So that's my one question. Second is, what percent of 1.6 million square foot are we envisioning towards data center? And third question, I know there are so many of data centers in queue to get, data centers in City of Santa Clara, we already have 60. What is the availability of power to these data centers? Because there are many already in pipeline. When will be the power available to these data centers if we come up with those? And with this, I, if, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard that they, Related will not take into any force majeure clause when taking into Parcel 5 and 6, basically. And, but my question is if they are not be taking, and if this thing is approved, if they will not take any force majeure clause, when will they take up, take down the land? Right away? After a year? When will that happen? And my last other question would be, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to see the financial numbers only for Parcel 1 and 2 separately. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I also was concerned about the power usage and wanting to make certain I understood how that would affect things because we've been told that we don't have any extra. So, but I was trying to understand also the non-SPPE and the ancillary data center designation. That wasn't quite as clear as I'd like it to be. I, I understand, and I don't have to have this today, but I understand you're going to change the configuration, and I'm looking of the roads and the access. I heard that the bike and pedestrian would still be on the Guadalupe side, but you would not be continuing on with the road there. I know it now, I just thought it, forgot it for a second. Anyway, I'm wondering, you talked about the connection also between Lafayette, on either side of Lafayette, and mentioning the old golf cart access, which isn't really appropriate or, or useful. I'm just wondering how that would work out. When I was looking at that, there's a holding, holding pond up there that Councilmember Jane was talking about and wondering how that was part of that park, because there is a holding pond up there on the south part of 237. It is just a holding pond. Obviously, we need to be using reclaimed water, purple pipe for any data centers. The big question I had is, one of your slides, you mentioned Scheme B as compared to Scheme C, and there was no Scheme B that I knew of. And that was a little bothersome because we were, we were talking about A, and then we were talking about C. And in your slides, you did mention B. I should have written down the slide number, but I just, that didn't make sense to me. You did answer the last question, is how much would be approved by staff ministerially, but it sounds like it will be going through the Planning Commission and coming back to City Council. Because today, we just have a note and file for a study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cox.
Thanks. I want to understand a little bit more about the change to 800,000 square feet of retail. If you look under the land uses, I'm wondering if incidental use, which says that in the northeast parcel, Phase 1 and 2, there can still be retail, there can still be restaurants. Does that 800 square feet represent a maximum? Because at that point, if you had more incidental use for retailer restaurants, it would change that land use, or is that a minimum? I think in understanding that, there is the opportunity then, if that was to become a retail-heavy area or maximize that usage, do we need to then consider, you know, transportation or accessibility through the bridge again? The other thing I want to talk about, and I think it's been brought up, when we talk about data center usage, I agree, we have a real viability issue when it comes to power. But I'm wondering if staff could answer what a doubling of rent, I think that would essentially be $366 about per square foot, and are we seeing that model used in other data centers? I know we want that to be the most attractive element of this, but when it comes to the reality of doubling rent, do we believe there would still be interest in that? And then finally, there were comments regarding the city review and processing timelines up for reconsideration. I just want to make sure I heard that you said you believe the times are too short? And not, you know, I, I would like to understand a little bit more about that. It sounds like you're wanting to lengthen or draw out the review process, which again, maybe I'm just misunderstanding what that means, would be a little bit antithetical when we talk about making the project move in a timely manner. So if you could speak to that a little bit, it'd be great.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was my last question, so making, making sure that we can make, make it sooner rather than later as far as the process for permitting process and the review process. I'm not sure what that would entail, whether maybe it could be feasible to have additional staff that might be somehow paid through the project, but definitely that would be beneficial for us to do it sooner. I was wondering where Parcel 3 went. I didn't see where, where it went on some of the slides there. I'm just wondering if that's something that we just, maybe it's in the future. Yeah, I just didn't see where that went. And the other question that I had was, was that? As far as we had a, a comment as far as the labor, it's always beneficial for us to be able to work, live, and play here. So the more that we make it afford, not only affordable as far as to live here, and as far as the market rate, AMI, I think is 100%. It definitely would be beneficial to have it lower. But I think that the 15%, at least at AMI, and maybe some, some variance on that would be beneficial, but also to make sure that we can try to have more labor that's from the city or from the area would be beneficial. I know that there's Metro Ed, Silicon Valley College of Technology Education, which has a, a construction part to that, and it's, it's a high school program, so maybe there's some way that we can work with the apprentices there to, to get them jobs, even if it's somewhere where they where they can learn some basic skills there on the job site. But with that, that's the only questions I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Park.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much for all the work that was put into this and for the staff. I do have concerns as well. I mean, we talk about light industrial, but it sounds like, and we've got a couple of slides that support this, we're talking about data centers. And we're not just talking about SPPE data centers at 5299 megawatts, but we're talking about smaller data centers, too. You know, those, and the, I think the controls that we have or the complaints would go to the Director of Community Development. If there are, I don't know, residential complaints, people complaining about the projects that are brought forward, but how many complaints do you really expect from that area, especially when things aren't being built out? I mean, when, if the data centers are proposed at a time where there aren't a lot of residents or there aren't a lot of people complaining, then what kind of feedback would we actually get for data centers? And I hear that we're talking about doubling the ground rent for data centers, but, I mean, we can double the ground rent, but data centers don't drive retail. They don't drive foot traffic. They don't build lifestyle centers like we would like this to be. I mean, I think we should build what we want for that area so that we get what we expect. And this is an entertainment district. I mean, the first thing that people complained about when they heard about this scheme, I mean, I know people that went to some of them, I think that you had the presentation to the north side, in the north side library, was, oh my goodness, do they want to put more data centers here? This is an entertainment district. I mean, we want this to, I mean, everyone says, when we talk about downtowns even, that if you can make something vibrant, if you can drive foot traffic, if you can get small businesses to be successful in your entertainment district, that will drive much more in taxes than having a fixed use, having property taxes, bless you, having ground rent alone. I mean, we'd like this, to this project, to basically support everything else that's there. I mean, we'd like the parks, we'd like the open space to support the other uses there so that people who want to have, I don't know, if they want performance areas, if they want performance centers, concert venues, that they're right there, and they're integrated. They're not just, well, there's a park if you want to use it, and we're keeping that open for other uses. I think we should think about this in advance so that people will come here and that people will stay. When we talk about traffic issues, congestion issues, and parking, like, all of these are tied together. When I think about Lafayette, I think about Lafayette as, it's going to be a future thoroughfare if and when Bart ever gets built, 10, 20, 30, 100 years, who knows when it's going to get built? But it's going to be a straight shot, Lafayette, between the Bart Station and the stadium and Amtrak and the trains, and we really need to think about that. Because Lafayette has a lot of things constraining it. It can't get much wider, if at all. We've got houses on one side, we've got power, you know, we've got transmission lines on the other, on a creek. And this is what, and we can't build that out. I mean, and we need to bring more power into this area, and this is the line that we're going to pick. I don't think that's a good line. I'd rather that we moved it someplace else, not just because it's away from residential, but also because it allows for growth of Lafayette. Because again, I think Lafayette is going to be a major thoroughfare when we have an entertainment district there. I mean, I think we need to look at all sides of this equation. I think the comment that another council member made about looking at the bridge, looking at access to that area, is warranted. Because again, we're not looking at, well, we'll see what's going to be there. I mean, they say the best way to predict the future is to make the future. If we want that place to be a successful entertainment district, then we have to design that place to be successful. Right? And if it doesn't turn out to be a successful entertainment district, that's our failing. Right? But we can't build it in parts for failure. There are so many other things. I mean, I would really like to build the resources in advance. We don't want to bring the people in and then consider the fire station. I keep hearing about how we can put the fire station off, how we can pay for the additional police once construction is completed, but I think things like this services, we should build the infrastructure for those services in advance. Right? And if it costs more, well, I would hate to be caught with major issues and we are not prepared. I'd rather be overprepared and, well, we built a little bit earlier than we would have preferred, but I think that's a good thing. And if in the short term, the only thing that it does, if the only thing it does is reduce response times, I'm perfectly happy with that. I am perfectly happy with that. And I don't think that any resident in this city would complain if, after waiting for a decade, you know, they got the response times that they deserved from 2016. I think that the comment of we shouldn't have torn things down, including, and I'm trying to avoid using the word eminent domain, but I just decided, well, I'm going to use it. You know, if we hadn't...
Are there questions here, Councilmember?
These are comments. Right? I mean, at some point, I think that they're going to come back, and they're going to respond not just to our questions, but also to our comments. I think that there are a number of questions that have been asked by the other people in council, and I think those are good questions. But see, these are the comments that I have, that I don't think have been asked or said, stated by council. Right? I want to understand these new zoning categories as well, but reality, I'd like to see our entertainment district. I mean, we're pushing off ideas for downtown because of this, and then we're hearing that the plans for this area are being reduced. We've got Great America, I'd like to see all of these things come together. And what I'm hearing is, well, this is kind of being planned separately, and we're planning it for something other than just entertainment and offices, and it's supposed to be a lifestyle center. But I feel that the inclusion of data centers takes away a lot of space, and it doesn't drive foot traffic. I mean, these are my big concerns, and this is what I've heard from resident after resident after resident. Almost every comment about Related comes to, why aren't we ready? Well, we heard why we're not ready. And again, we want to support you with the schedules that make you successful, because your success is our success. At the same time, I think that the complaints, the concerns that people have are valid. And from a short-term perspective, yes, we can double ground rents for data centers. But from a long-term perspective, I think that a successful, vibrant retail area like Santana Row, I mean, I just read an article about Santana Row, how Santana Row changed the view of what retail was, you know, before Santana Row. Santana Row had huge setbacks, they had a fire, and they thought, is it going to be worthwhile to build Santana Row even with the fire? And the short answer is, they made it happen. And it's this kind of can-do, it's this kind of idea that we have for the entertainment district for the City of Santa Clara that I want to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jahal.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a follow-up question and request, basically. So as I requested, I want fiscal benefits only for parcel five and six separately, and that may not be presented today. If it's possible, that's good, if not. And on slide number 77, we have a ground rent calculation of totality, basically, all of the, like, we have taken number 115 million for our land cost depending upon ground rent, and then 1.3 billion for upgrades, basically. So I want that also to be break down into parcel five and six, because there are differences between upgrades for other parcels versus five and six. So if I can, when you present next, basically, if that can be presented, that for parcel five and six, what would the ground rent study basically would be? That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have four questions, of which some may be answered this evening, but if you don't have the information, if you bring them back when we actually have the city council hearing, that would be fine as well. The first one is the fire station. Is it proposed to be built on firm ground, or is it going to be built on top of a platform? Because then I can see how the timing of that would be a little different, depending on where it's going. The second question I had is that, you know, many of the residents over the years are very concerned about the traffic that's going to come from this project. So looking at the scheme C that's proposed for that side of Lafayette, what would be the reduction in traffic with the manufacturing industrial uses versus the large amount of office that was there before? Because I think that's something our residents would want to know in terms of whether or not to support that. So that might be something that comes later, but I would like to have that information. The third is, I thought you mentioned it earlier, but I wasn't sure if David did or not, but during the term of this lease, what would be just the ground rent only that would accrue to the City of Santa Clara's general fund? And what would, my fourth question is, what would the ground rent with other estimated taxes like sales and hotel tax over the term of the lease, what would be accruing to the estimate accruing to the general fund? Because I think that is a significant number that the public should be aware of on this property. And those are my four questions. And I don't see any others, so I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public, since we have gone over some new information, would like to speak. Anyone here in the audience? Anyone online? I don't see anyone. Okay, city staff, do you need some extra time? Or you, I know there was less questions this time, so...
I think we're ready.
Okay, when you're ready. And again, this is a study session, there's no action at the end of the day. So go ahead, city manager.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor and council. So some of those questions, we can certainly answer tonight, others we will bring back when we formally bring back.
Yes, whatever you can answer, bring back at the regular session.
Right.
When we...
Go through scheme C. Okay. First set of questions from Councilmember Jane with regard to the new land use designations for warehouses and data centers that would be created. And so I'll turn that over to our community development department. The question there was just wanting to understand a little bit more around those proposed uses. So I see we're still conferring on those, and so we will come back to that. Councilmember Jane mentioned that he was pleased with the 15% affordable housing threshold, so an increase in what's in the current DA. And so I'll turn it over to our community development director.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of the new land use designations, we will need to do a general plan amendment because we're going to light industrial uses. And then we'll also need to do the rezoning in order to allow for the permitted uses versus the ancillary uses versus the process.
Thank you.
Okay, a number of questions from Councilmember Jane around, oh, in general, a desire for more parkland and more, the fact that with Tasman East as a neighbor, it appears that we're losing parkland in the office park. I will note that that was serving the office park area, not really serving the residential area. I see Related nodding. Is there any additional information that we need, that anyone feels we need to state on that? But that was not neighborhood-serving parkland, it was open space serving the office park. And with the conversion from industrial data centers, not parkland planned in that use, because that is not typical for that use.
Right, but the total number of park acres will go down.
No.
The city park acreage is the same.
The city park.
The city park acres is 35 acres, but...
Could you please come to the microphone and talk about what the city park acreage is? It's not just 35.
Well, there are two things. There's the city park, that I put in air quotes, which is on parcel three, that's the same as it's always been. But in addition, the public parks, which are North Park along the bottom of City Park, I think they're all like east, west, et cetera, including the park plan that you've already approved as part of phase two, those are all the same. So it's exactly the same amount of public park. And as Jovan was saying, what was shown for parcels one and two was just private open space for the office users. And there is some private open space for the industrial users in the scheme C plan as well.
Okay, next, there were questions by Councilmember Jane related to our climate action plan and policies for data centers to use minimal water and reduce electricity. I think we'll come back with that when we discuss scheme C. A number of questions from Councilmember Jahal with regard to, will property tax revenue be reduced? And I believe you were discussing because of the conversion from office to data centers on scheme C. I can turn that over to Related to discuss that. I do think that that is subject to what's built, right? Just a conversion from office to data centers does not mean that there will be a reduction in property tax. It depends on the total valuation of what's built. At times, a office building compared to a data center, the data center may have a higher valuation. And so my gut is that that's a TBD, I'm looking around at the team, and so that's the consensus. So we're not ready to say that there will absolutely be a reduction in property tax. I think that will bring any additional information on that point when we come back for scheme A question, again, from Councilmember Jane with regard to, how many square feet will be dedicated to data centers? I will turn that over to Related, if you have that information now.
So I would say there's no specific amount of square footage set aside for data centers. It's, our understanding from talking to the city and SVP that there currently is not power available for a data center. You know, however, in the future, you know, obviously, there's work by SVP to increase the system's capacity. You know, if there was availability to provide power to the site, we would be interested in pursuing it for some portion of the site. And, you know, we think we're very aligned financially and economically with the city. It could be a win-win to do some portion of it, even if it was just one building as a data center in lieu of an industrial or advanced manufacturing building.
Next question was in regard to understanding a little bit more on data center power and SPPE versus non-SPPE. And the most appropriate person to address that would be Afshah, our community economic development director. All right, so...
Or maybe we can skip that one and come back.
Yeah, we will come back to that one. Another question with regard to the Lafayette connection and golf cart bridge, how will that work and the pond? So important to note, the desire to retain the possibility for a replacement for the golf cart bridge is really precipitated by the deletion of the Second Street Bridge in scheme C to provide additional connectivity for any employees at the light industrial data center area as well as employee residence in Tasman East. And so that's the reason for that. There was a question again from Councilmember Hardy around scheme B, and the statement that scheme B caught you by surprise, and you didn't know that there was a scheme B.
It's, we looked it up, it's slide 71.
Slide 71. So let's bring up slide 71 there. There is a scheme B, and I will turn that over to our community development director to address that. Primary difference there is the reduction in housing units, but let's bring up slide...
I have to remember, the print is different than what's up here. We found it. Might be the next one.
Perfect.
There you go.
Okay, so the overall total square footage project...
Okay, so the overall total square footage project is the same. The 200 units are in parcel five, which is referred to here. The total number of units, residential units, 1,680, 1,680 remains the same. So it's the same number of residential units.
I'm sorry, the question is, what is Scheme B and why is it on that slide?
Got it. Scheme B reflects a reduction in residential. So if you see in residential, Scheme A calls for the full 1,680, where Scheme B allows for only the minimum residential of 200.
I just wanted to explain really briefly the genesis of Scheme A and Scheme B, because I've been around a million years. And so when we did the EIR for the project, we had no idea whether the state water board and the regional water board were going to approve any housing on top of the landfill. And so Scheme A assumes that the maximum amount of units that we thought were achievable on the landfill parcel, which was 1,480, would be approved. Scheme B is the other side of that parentheses and involves only residential on parcel five, Phase One, because it's not on landfill. So we knew that we could have that many residential units. We didn't know if we could have more. And so that is one of the key distinctions between schemes A and B. And they're both within the existing master community plan, and either could be pursued or some mixture of them.
Thank you. That was not in any other part of the presentation, and it was very confusing.
There was another question with regard to retail, to describe why there was a reduction in 800 square feet of retail and what's left. I know there's been a number of discussions around that. I think Related is best to talk about that. If you can hit that briefly, and then we'll come back with additional detail for Scheme
The different schemes that are reflected here as it relates to retail.
Can you speak up, Steve? Thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Lean forward, too. This doesn't.
God, it's going to cost you.
I did it, I did it.
Related will pay for it.
Please clarify my question.
Oh, sure, sure.
My question isn't about the reduction. I understand that there is a driving economic need behind that. My question is, when we look at that 800,000 and we consider that there is incidental uses, is that 800,000 a minimum or a maximum? Essentially saying that, you know, if we do have a lot of incidental use, can that number go up in a booming retail economy? Or if we go above that threshold, are we now in a new land use that would deem it not light industrial anymore?
I'd have to really consult the.
And maybe the question's easiest answered, that there's no way it would go above 800,000 in this kind of.
I think it could, I think is the answer, but I'm not sure. Anna probably, or our council could, well, please.
Thank you. Actually, because, so, I do think we need to look at what I thought your original question was of if it's 800,000 and, well, I think that my second answer takes care of that. But if it were 800,000, would any incidental retail on parcels one and two diminish that? I think the answer is no, partly because, given the retail focus that the city has always wanted to see, we have put an additional term into the draft Scheme C master community plan whereby any square foot of allowed office in the city center on parcel four could be transformed into a square foot of retail. So it could go up.
Could go up.
And in fact, the 800,000 square foot is really the minimum retail. There's also, under the DDA, an additional retail best efforts clause. So there's an obligation for Related to continue to seek to add retail to the city center and transform some of that square footage allowed from office to retail.
Thank you.
Okay, there were a number of questions with regard to the doubling of rent for data centers. We'll come back with additional information on that, but the core thrust is, we know that data centers command a higher ground rent, and so we negotiated for that, and we'll come back with additional information on that. Two questions on the desire to lengthen, so increase the amount of time that staff has to process the application, which I think it was said that that's sort of the opposite of what we want to do. I think what's important to note, and I'll have staff come up in just a minute to articulate a little bit more, is in this DA and DDA with Related, we shortened our normal timeframes. Now, when there was a thought that the project would be developed expeditiously because market conditions were great, Related was going to pay for additional staff to do that. We are in a point now where, because the project has not proceeded at that clip, the additional new bodies have not came on. And so we are under extremely tight timeframes to deliver, and it's pushing off other work that staff needs to do, and we want to just hit a bit of a reset, knowing that time is of the essence, knowing that when the market conditions are right, we will need to move quickly. But there have been a number of issues with staff meeting the timelines, and I want to turn it over to the community development director to articulate a little bit more.
Thank you, city manager. So I do want to go back to that one slide, I believe it's slide 54, where we talk about the processes. So the process is relevant to not only data centers, but it's relevant to all industrial uses that would take place on parcels one and two. And why is that important? Because we're looking at a master community plan. So when we're doing a master community plan, it's already coming before you, and part of it is the public process, the planning commission, the council. So in essence, you're already allowing for these uses, you're anticipating them. So anything that would come in would be a much more streamlined and reduced review than what we're doing currently, which is one project at a time. So this would reduce the SPPE data centers, which are between 50 to 90 megawatts, they would still need to go through the California Energy Commission, because that's a requirement. However, then we do have non-SPPE, which are less than 50 megawatts, and those would be through a city-led process. Then the third category was ancillary uses, and those are basically like subordinate and in conjunction to the primary use, so they would be much smaller. I mean, even a small office could incorporate a small data center. And so that would be through a minor use permit. But one thing that we shared with you earlier was that we do also have design guidelines. So when these do move forward, it's not just the permitted uses. What we've also said is a set of guidelines that would help guide the development for these, so that aesthetically they would look better, and that they would feel more like land uses that look like a normal land use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there were a number of comments by councilmember Park. I think staff has noted those, and we'll come back to this, and address any of those in detail at a later date. I think that there were also questions around the entertainment district and desires that we not move forward with a change in office to data centers because we want to keep the entertainment district. I think I just want to point out that the change to Scheme C does not in any way negatively impact the core city center and the entertainment district. And so Scheme C is trading out office for light industrial or data centers. And so if we miss that point, please articulate.
It literally says we're reducing the number of retail, food, beverage, and entertainment, literally. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I don't understand it.
Got it. Okay, so we will come back and articulate that, because there is a reduction in retail.
Having, almost a having of retail.
Right. Not connected to the change in land use on Scheme C, really connected to a resetting of the city center and the amount of retail that we believe is viable. And we've had a number of discussions with Related. And when we come back to you, we will provide relative examples for what can be reduced, comparing the amount, for example, of retail that would be in city center to what you can see at Sanford Shopping Center, or what you can see at other shopping centers in the area, just to provide some relative comparisons.
That doesn't make any sense, because right here, slide 71, it says, city center mixed use, parcels four and five, GSF, and we literally see the having of retail, food and beverage, entertainment there. And so when you say it wouldn't do anything to affect the city center, I don't see it. Thank you.
Right. And so the point is, the trading out of office and adding light industrial and data centers to Scheme C is not the reason for the retail being reduced, and we will fully articulate that when we come back for Scheme C.
Independent of the reasons, the, it's right here in black and, well, orange, you know, white and black.
City manager is answered.
That they are going to be reduced, yes.
City manager is answered.
Again, I will wait for the official answer, and we can do that in regular session as well. Thank you.
And just for a highlight, we'll call Related up.
Just for clarity, the retail minimum was, has, has been, and always has been, 800,000 square feet. So even under the original scheme, that 1.5 was an example program of what could have been built or was envisioned, you know, in 2016 as possible, had we had been able to do department stores and other things, which is just no longer viable in today's environment. Department stores are not expanding, they're contracting and closing. So 800,000 was the, is the minimum under Scheme A and B, and is still the minimum under Scheme C.
Thank you for that clarification. City manager.
With that, I just want to call up slide 79. With that, I want to call up slide 79. So there were a number of questions around the comparison of total revenue to the city. The mayor asked a question about that, we'll come back with that. And I know councilmember Jahal asked a question of segmenting out the revenue for parcels five and six, and we will bring that back. Just through this slide, want to articulate the amount of revenue from hotel tax relative to the other revenue sources. And that's important because we know certain development types can't be built in all market cycles. And it really means that we, if we want to achieve the full vision of Related, need to stay the course and recognize that there are market cycles where some products will be built because they're, the developer can get financing, there are clients because the financing means that they can't be built on spec. And so we know that these developments sometimes take 10, 15, 20 years for developments of this size. And so when we come back with Scheme C, we'll bring additional information back on the full totality of impact as asked by the mayor. But just wanted to provide that articulation, that it won't happen, every piece of the development won't happen in every development cycle. And if we make a change, we may lose out on realizing that entire vision. So with that, mayor.
I just want to say, I know it might take 10 or 15 years for full build-out. We knew that when we approved it in 2016. I just want to see the totality of what the income generation would be to the City of Santa Clara over the next, you know, 100 years.
Totally.
Because that's the numbers I'd want to see.
There was a question from councilmember Jahal on when Scheme C land would be taken down, and I think Related answered that, was potentially very soon after reentitlement, and depending on market conditions, potentially built within two years.
If I may, did I hear it wrong, that force majeure clause, once we approve Scheme C, that will not apply to this parcel material adverse?
Yeah, you take it.
It's a little, a refinement to that. So force majeure would continue to apply to any obligations dealing with Scheme C and dealing with the industrial parcels, but the materially adverse economic conditions, which is what we've been delayed in for quite some time because of the office vacancies, that would not pertain. So neither the retail vacancy nor the office vacancy metrics would pertain to parcels one and two under Scheme C.
Oh, okay, so the other top conditions.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a strike, a riot, a flood, those types of force majeure conditions, those would continue to pertain, but not the economic conditions.
And economic conditions include availability of the capital. That will not be a condition, that will not be part of that.
I'm sorry, I missed the first word.
Availability of the capital, like, they need some finance.
Yes.
That will not be part of the.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if there are disruptions in the financing markets, then that is a force majeure condition. But our provisions in the DDA specifically do say that the inability to get financing in general is not force majeure.
Okay, got it. And just to elaborate, city manager, I know you spoke about it. So I requested for parcel four and, parcel one and two, separate fiscal study as well as land calculation, which was done on page, slide number 77. Because slide number 77 has a full 239 acre, 192 acre, leaving aside the city park, so basically 192 acre. But I want to have perspective on those parcel only, like 110 acres, I think parcel one and two are 110 acres, so I want a study on that one only. I know it cannot be done today, but when it is being presented, I would like to have that.
Right.
Thank you.
We will attempt to bring that back with additional articulation around the pros and cons of that analysis vis-à-vis development of the entire parcel.
I asked the question about the fire station and the reduction in traffic. Are you going to bring that back later? Can you answer now?
Sure. With regard to the fire station, the fire station, New Station 10 is a parcel that is under control of the city. It is not on landfill, it fronts Great America Parkway. And so that can move forward.
So it doesn't have the constraints.
It is not constrained by the other infrastructure. Your other question was.
Traffic.
Traffic, bringing back information on the traffic reduction and switching out office from, to data center and light industrial, and we will bring that information back.
Thank you. All right, now I have two hands up. Are there additional questions? Because we want to wrap this up. Councilmember Jahal, your light still on?
I just, I just.
You did, oh, thank you. Councilmember Park, a question?
Yes, I do. So we've had a question from the mayor about the effect of ground rent on the general fund and the effect of estimated taxes on the general fund. And I understand that we're talking about the same, the square footage being the same, and that we have a minimum 800K retail restaurant square footage regardless of the scheme. But I'm looking at the numbers, and it says 1.502 million square feet. And I'd like to know what, how does, what proposed activate the area in entertainment district? And I'd like to see what the effect would be with the 1.5 million square feet retail restaurant as opposed to the 800,000 square feet retail and restaurant. I'd like to see what the difference could be for an activated area, successful area of retail restaurants and entertainment.
We can bring that information back.
All right, I think that's it. City manager, thank you very much. Do you have any final comments? Do you have any final comments?
Thank you for your time.
I want to thank everybody, including all of our full staff that's here, everyone from Related and all your staff as well. Thank you so much. It was a really great presentation and a good memory refresher as to what this project has gone through. I do remember when it first came, we were going to build four department stores. Wow, how things have changed. So thank you very much. Hope you all get home safely. May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion second to adjourn? Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.